Item number one is a written briefing in regards to a renewable energy and energy choice partnership interlocal agreement. We're going to move on to item number two, which is our 2016 Citizen Compensation Advisory Committee Annual Report and Study of Police and Fire Compensation. So we have a great committee that goes through this process every year for us to make sure that our employees in the city are well compensated. So we would like to invite David Salazar, who is the Human Resources Program Manager, Frances Hume, Citizens Compensation Advisory Committee, Michelle Vargas, who's our consultant for First West Consultant Dave Jackson. And I don't know if we have other members of the Citizens Compensation Advisory Forum here with us today, and if they are, can we have them stand and just introduce them as well?
Kerma Jones.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Kerma, K-E-R-M-A.
Kerma Jones and Dale Cox. Awesome. Well, we appreciate you being here, and of course, we appreciate your service.
You ready?
All right, we'll let you just lead off.
Well, thank you for introducing us, because I brought a picture of all of us. Typically, there are seven on the committee, and we're down one. Jennifer Seelig was on our committee starting off last year and is now, I guess, working for the city. But we have Connie, and I'm not even going to pronounce her names correctly, who is our chair. She's out of town, and Cory is also out of town, so they asked me if I would fill in to give the report. You met Kerma and Dale, and then John Matthews, who used to work for the Utah Retirement Systems. Collectively, we've got over 220 years of experience, so we're not going to say we're old, though. Thank you, too, for allowing my schedule. I had a must-go-to place this afternoon, and so I really appreciate the schedule change, so thank you so much. Our charge as the committee is to make sure that we evaluate what's happening with the pay and benefits and give input on things that we're seeing and informing. You've all received a copy of our report, and I am not going to go through point by point and read that to you, because I'm sure you probably have already done that. But I do want to touch on a few things that, from a compensation standpoint, when we talk about quartile strategy, it's important in our report, we talk about leading, lagging at market. This is a four-quartile strategy where, at the 50% mark, it's considered the median or the midpoint of the market. And where Salt Lake City follows is more market-based in their approach to pay, if you are at 95% of midpoint, you're at a lead strategy for a public sector. And so that's just with your base pay. When you add benefits to that to get a total compensation, so just, probably you're going to feel like you're having an eye test for a few seconds, but from a total compensation strategy, direct pay is anything you receive that you can spend. Indirect pay are your benefits. And then all of the training, development, culture, just the way you do work, are considered rewards in the way that people feel safe and comfortable in their jobs. And with the strategy you all have, you are at a lead strategy. So going back to the slide. Let me ask you to back me up. It's something wrong. Sorry, I usually have my clicker with me, but I forgot it in the car. The city has a lead strategy, and in our report, we pointed out that there are some that are considerably over, like the web producer at 157%. That's 157% of that midpoint, or the median. And then we do have some that are lagging, and if they are under 90%, which we had six positions that are lagging under the 90%, having a strategy to bring those up so that you don't lose talented workers in those areas. You have one that is marginal, and our recommendation was that a 3% increase based on economic standards and world-at-work projections overall, but an extra 1% to 2% to help with some of the changes. We also recommend a pay-for-performance strategy, which is very different than most public sector organizations have, but if you're trying to implement succession planning or other things, having pay-for-performance to differentiate between the types of work workers are doing. All right. This slide, I think we need to come back one more. This quartile strategy, again, if you add the benefits to it, it then becomes a total compensation strategy. And if you look at the 75,452, is between quartile three and four. When you add the benefits to what you all already have in base pay at the city, you are more like, closer to that third quartile. So you really are a true pay leader in comp as well as in benefits. One of the other areas that the council asked last year for us to look at was to see, because Salt Lake has some unique features, such as it is a capital city, we do have an airport, we've had the Olympics here before, we have homeless shelters and other key things that make us fairly unique. We were asked to have a study done to see if fire and police especially would match up, not just in our recruiting area, which is typically here in Utah. We are the pay leader, so we can attract from the market here in Utah, but looking at fire and pay, if that were true. And based on the results that First West put together, which you all should have a copy of as well, we can see that even from a national perspective, that fire and pay are still market leaders. This particular slide, which was at the very back of our report, shows from the HAY study we did in 2014-15, that fire and pay lead, you can see the top line in benefits, and then the next line down that's dotted in red is Salt Lake City. So from a benefits perspective, they're, I would say, extremely leading in the market here, as well as still being very nationally competitive and matching there. David, what do you mean?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Stan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I could just ask for a little more detail on that specifics. When you did these evaluations, we're looking at a summary of pay and benefits.
Correct.
Correct. And so you mentioned that benefits are incredibly high, well, that's not your wording, that are higher. And when you split out benefits versus pay, did you look at any of that analysis as well? Did you do a comparison, or did you just do them as a summary?
Okay, this one is done just from the HAY study that we did when we looked at benefits last year, and the one that we do every year looks at base pay. So we are at 95% or higher typically, with the exception of a few of the jobs that lag in base pay.
And that's base pay?
Right.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. And did I miss something? I'm trying to remember all the things. I didn't want to read this to you. I know I've had reports given before where people are reading them. I think that's the bulk of it. I did want to leave some time for First West to be able to ask, have some questions asked. I don't know if you have any more questions for me or on the report that we submitted. I'm happy to respond to any.
Why don't we go to the consultant really quickly, see if they have anything to add, and then we'll open it up to the council members here for questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is this close enough to me that you can hear?
So it's just right next to you.
Okay. So what I did is I prepared just a few minutes to just give you a summary of what our project entailed. As Frances mentioned, we were engaged by Salt Lake, per the request of the council and the CCAC, to work with the police and fire associations to identify what characteristics, as she mentioned, the characteristics that make Salt Lake unique, were in order to identify cities that would be comparable to Salt Lake when looking at pay compensation for fire and police. And so we worked very closely with the fire and police associations to identify what those characteristics were that made their jobs unique and made Salt Lake unique, in terms of cities of similar size. So Salt Lake is, the population is not as large as some other cities, but Salt Lake compares in many ways to larger cities. So we worked with them closely to understand what that criteria was, and through that process, we were able to establish multiple criteria that we crafted into a study that was sent to 56 cities. And these cities were ones that had participated in surveys in the past with Salt Lake City and from the region, like, well, from geographically the region as well as other parts of the country. But we also had some input from the associations on cities they felt were very similar to them in terms of things that they do with their fire and police. And so there was, typically, the range was 150,000 to 600,000 population, which is different than, I think, what was compared in the past. And we also included, at their request, Las Vegas and Phoenix, which they felt were very similar in terms of how they manage their public safety jobs and the types of things that they're dealing with. So of the 56 cities, 26 responded to the survey, and out of that 26, based on the 17 criteria that we had worked with them to identify as being the most critical, we were able to identify that 15 of these cities were similar in terms of that criteria to Salt Lake. And we used a benchmark of 65% of the 17 points. If they were able to hit that, at least 65%, then we consider them as part of the compensation study. So 11 cities were eliminated from that group that had responded to the survey. So out of that group of 15 cities, we compared four police positions and six fire. And we used the averages compared to the study group for Salt Lake comparing them to the average of the group in looking at their, the average and then the median. And we asked for minimum pay, actual average, and top-out rate. So in addition to that, we were asked to do what we had done last year in terms of using the cost of living to normalize that data and normalize the salaries and compare, because cost of living is important when you're looking at multiple cities, not just in Utah, but throughout the country. And so we did that analysis as well, and were able to provide both data points to Salt Lake. So you have the information, which I think I'll have a copy of, which includes the comparison to the study group without including cost of living, and then the comparable with the cost of living. And then, would you like me to give you an example that would just kind of show how that works?
I would, please.
And before you do, could you help me understand on those positions, you selected, the criteria for selecting those positions? Once you got down to those comparable cities and you picked those positions for comparison, how did you determine that criteria for those positions?
The positions were the positions that we were asked to use. It was the four police positions and the six fire.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So basically, I use an example, it's on page 40 of the report that you have, of just looking at a police officer who has a top-out rate of 65,374. If you look at that compared to the study group, which I said was the 15 cities, so that we call them the market, right, would be, they were at 89% of that group's average. So when we used cost of living based on that study group average, Salt Lake's rate is equivalent to what we call purchase power. So it's not that they have more money, but because the cost of living is lower in Utah compared to some of the other, the average of those cities, they had a purchase power of 71,897, which puts them at 98.1% of the group's average. So that's how that is used to show when cost of living is included in that analysis, it does make that city, based on purchase power, maybe give them more purchase power or less, depending on the cost-of-living index for the city. And all of that is detailed on pages 33 through 37 of how that, the cost-of-living analysis is done. And all the individual reports for each of the positions are on pages 71 through 90 of that final report. Do you have any questions?
I'm sure there will be questions.
Okay.
Council members.
Charlie. Yeah, so a couple of questions. So this was a very important, I mean, this study was very important to council last year when we were working through the budget that we moved forward with this. When was the study initiated initially, and how long did it take to finish?
So we were engaged in early January, I believe, is that correct, to start doing the study? I don't have the exact dates, but it was early this year.
Okay. Dan, do you feel that you had enough time? Because I know that the CCAC had to start meeting immediately to come up with some of the recommendations for this coming budget. It just seems like, and I'm not saying that, you know, this is because of First West, but it just seems like starting something in early January is a very compressed timeframe when we were talking about something that the council was pretty specific on in May. Maybe, David, I don't know if you want to?
Well, to that point, so when the issue was discussed, it came up actually two times in March of last year, when the committee presented its report, Connie, the chair, had mentioned that the committee had proposed doing a third-party study. And then again in May, when Deb Alexander was here speaking to you regarding the human resources budget. Between that time and the time that the start, the study was started, the First West had done, and had already been doing an initial study, so there was one study before this one that they had done. And the results of that study were presented to the CCAC in their fall meeting. So it wasn't until the fall that they had the opportunity to hear the results of that first survey, as well as to receive the council's input with regard to what they wanted to have done in the study. So it was the CCAC who then helped drive and provide the guidelines to First West as to what the study should include and how they should approach that. So that occurred when they had their meeting in the fall. So they first heard the results of the first study in their initial meeting, and then a subsequent, subsequent meeting is when they gave the direction to First West to start the study. So just in terms of the timing and the timing of the committee's meetings is what accounts for that lag in time.
Okay. And then, so one of the other criteria that we were direct on, and you mentioned in your presentation that you did meet with some of the different bargaining groups, or, you know, police and fire.
Yes.
And was ASME included in that as well, or was it just the fire union and police union that you met with?
What was the other group you mentioned?
The Public Employee Union asked me.
I don't know.
Yeah, since the study was focused on police and fire, it did not include ASME, because there were no positions to be surveyed.
Great. As far as the cities that were, that you surveyed, and how were those cities developed? Was that part of your work with police and fire?
Absolutely. Yeah, so we went through very, we went through a lot of hours with them, understanding things that make Salt Lake unique, and then sending it out. What we did is we decided that we would, rather than us deciding, because we look at this criteria, who should be considered unique, we wanted to get the feedback from the cities and compare them to Salt Lake.
Sure.
And that's how we came up with the cities that, you know, we used most of the cities that either had been participating in surveys, because you get better results from cities who already are participating in those type of things. But we also included ones that they felt were critical to them, and then we just had to see who would respond. And we followed up with cities, and we tried our best to get more cities to respond so that we could see if there was a broader range. But we felt that 15 was a decent size of members, because Salt Lake honestly is very unique in a lot of different ways. And that came across in this process. So eliminating 11 cities shows that there was definitely a lot of criteria that didn't match up with those other cities.
Okay.
I think it's probably important, too, that of the 56 that were solicited, many of those would have self-selected out. So I think it proved that there were some unique features here in the city. Chair, I don't think we answered your original question about, did we have enough time to do the work? The amount of time that I think we were given was actually pretty representative of what we generally are given.
Okay.
In fact, we just simultaneously finished three compensation studies for public agencies in Utah, and every one of them had a similar timeline. So, you know, obviously, everyone wished they'd have a little more time, but it didn't feel ridiculous to us, though.
Okay, great. Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. One other question, then I'll defer. Yeah. On, so one of the concerns that I've heard back regarding the process was that, especially with fire, that a support rate was used to address the average pay. And the concern was that there weren't, that there really isn't a single operations firefighter who's paid at that support rate that we were utilizing to develop that study. And so I don't know, how did you guys decide which of the, you know, rates? Because with fire, with police, you know, everyone's funded at a different level, there are positions that are funded differently. Didn't, so did you actually use that support?
Rate.
Rate? And if you, and if so, how was that the rate that was chosen out of the other ones? And isn't it problematic when no one really is paid at that rate?
So what I'll say is that what, we initially got all the data from all the cities, and we asked for some specific information. And I was looking at Salt Lake in terms of, yeah, the hours and how much the pay was in comparing, comparing the hours worked, based on what I had been given by the associations in terms of that information. And found out through the process, because I did a lot of research with Salt Lake, to understand how they pay fire, that they negotiate on an annual salary, and that it didn't matter, is what I understand, based on, there's an annual rate, and you may be working in this group or that group, but your pay is the same, it's just that you work more hours based on that. And we did include the hours for every city, so that they could see how compared to, like, if you're in Seattle, if you're in Anaheim, if you're in Sacramento, how many hours does that fire person make for that salary? But we felt like we couldn't compare on an hourly rate when Salt Lake was being paid on an annual number. And even the contract shows that. So that's, that's why it was done that way. But I get what you're saying, and that's been, I know that's been a concern, but we did look at annual rates, because that was the way everyone is paid, and we did the same across the board, including that information on how many hours do they work?
Okay. And I thank you very much for that clarification. Is it that?
Counsel, one other item, too, is we were very careful that we actually made sure we requested the annual pay with every entity that was surveyed, and asked for clarification with them to double-check, to make sure there was no misunderstanding on the way that was taking place. And some of it was very clear and was easy to track, others didn't seem to track, and we took the extra time and effort through correspondence with them to have the clarity we needed to make sure we was comparing apples to apples.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Council members. Aaron, Andrew. Okay, Stan.
I just want to make sure we thank the commission for their work. Each year, we go through this process. I am consistently impressed by the quality of work from a volunteer review body. So I really hope you know how much we appreciate your time and commitment to this process. It's incredibly helpful in our budget conversation, so thank you all, and please thank the commission on our behalf.
I will do this. Thank you.
And then Charlie.
And I want to echo that. I think we have a lot of really good boards and commissions in the city. This is one that I think is, in my opinion, one of the most important that we have, because everything that Salt Lake City does is dependent on our employee workforce. And so with all, and I'm not saying that you guys are more important, or that your work is more important, but it kind of is, because the key is that, you know, we need to have employees who are well taken care of, employees who are satisfied with their, with their jobs, and employees who feel appreciated by the city and by our residents. And your committee is extremely important in helping us make some of the tough decisions when we're dealing with, you know, the difficult budget, to do our part to make sure that we're taking care of our folks. So thank you.
Well, thank you. As I'm hearing fire sirens outside, honestly, this has been a great, I've only been on the commission for a little over, well, I guess it's almost two years, but the dedicated workers that you have. An organization is only as good as the people in it. And I've been really impressed with the individuals we've met, and I feel like I haven't done our report justice, but I do know you've all read it. But thank you so much for taking time to hear and answer questions, and if you have anything else, we're then happy to answer.
We have, it looks like we have a few more. Andrew and Aaron.
Thanks. Just a request that next year, we be, perhaps I missed an invitation, I don't know if my peers were given that, but the last two years, I had the opportunity to meet with your chair beforehand, we had an invitation to go through the report in a little more depth, which was really helpful. And I, I think we didn't get the invitation this year.
You probably didn't, because she just started a new job, and so I'm pretty sure that was why. But if any of you still would like to, I'm speaking on behalf of my partners in crime here, but we would be happy to meet, especially with new members, because some of the terminology, unless you've been in compensation and benefits, is kind of tricky. So we'd be happy to meet whenever it makes sense.
Okay, we can have our, we could request that our schedule reach out to you, the committee, and set up some group, small group meetings, perhaps. I think it just helps in looking at your major findings and suggestions in going in for our budget process, to have had a little bit more thorough conversation about it.
Absolutely. Happy to do it.
Andrew.
It's essentially what I was going to say, but thank you. It was very clear, I mean, you did a nice job of presenting it, and the recommendations are very succinct, which I appreciate, and direct, so thank you very much.
And for next year, I only have one suggestion, and that suggestion would be that you find out where the unions think there's discrepancies with the consultant and with the compensation package, and actually use that as a format in looking at how you can address the issues that they currently have. I'm not asking you to negotiate, but use their concerns in next year's projections.
Thank you. I will say, I did miss this key point, and that is, I believe in the history of the committee, this is the first time that any kind of reach out to the union and this kind of collaborative discussion has occurred. And I think that is an extremely valid thing to do, especially when people have valid concerns, they want to be heard, and we're happy to do that. I'll make sure David does that. Plus, just so, Charlie, I know you had a concern about process and time. We did have a discussion about this in our committee, and one of the charges was that we really should start as a committee at this meeting, knowing what it is we're charged to do, and to start working on it now, rather than just waiting until a fall timeframe, which has been the past. We're a different organization with people, and we're, we know that you all are fluid and moving, and you've got new administration, and we want to make sure that we're providing you with what you need and when you need it. And so I was happy to see two of my colleagues here today, too, because in the past, I don't even think we've had committee members show up at this meeting. So yes, you do have our support, and we'll do our best to accommodate those things, and if you have others, open to that as well.
I know, I'm just preaching to the choir, but it is, I hate to see Salt Lake City as a training ground for our public safety employees to go elsewhere. There's no better training than in Salt Lake City with police and fire, and to see them leave and not have the opportunity to stay for, because of compensation is a little scary.
Let me show you my last slide.
Let's do it.
I think it's the last slide. It's a turnover slide, and this was quite surprising to me. You'll see that the bottom two lines are red and blue. Those, it starts in fiscal 2005 and goes through 2015, '16, projected. But the red line is fire, appropriately, and the blue is police. And you will see, it's almost a flat line. You do not have a lot of turnover, and when you do, it's typically when people are retiring and those kinds of things. So we are keeping a real good track on that, because you want to attract and retain great people, and so we did not see that that's been an issue, so.
It'd be neat to see a slide as well, seeing where we're poaching from other municipalities as well.
That's who we're stealing from.
So I appreciate it. Thank you for being here and all your hard work, and especially the committee as well for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to move on to item number three. For councilmembers that don't have their CDBG papers in front of them, like myself, go
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are we going to get this done tonight?
We've got a quorum and you know it.
All right. So I think, other than, we were going to look and see if Derek, with the changes that he had, we'll go first, of course, to Derek, see if there are any changes that he would like from the list that we went through last week. He was under the weather and we're going to give him all the opportunity that he needs to try and come up with, with his plan and see if he can gain some support. How about that? And maybe, Ben, you could just start us off before we go to Derek. Tell us where we're at, how much, if the money balances out currently as is or what we're short on.
So just to recap, at the last meeting, the council vice straw poll approved $85,000 in reallocations. And this was all in the public services section except for $20,000 that was in the housing section. And those key changes are summarized on page two of the staff report. Where we currently stand is we're $26,187 over budget. And these are for two items that councilmember Kitchen had recommended full funding for. It was $15,000 for the rape recovery center and $11,187 for the Boys and Girls Club Poplar Grove Digital Divide work. And so that's where the number at the top, this $26,187 comes from. And to find funding for this, it would need to be pulled from another public services application.
So I guess I'm going to approach Derek and see what he's got up his sleeve.
Mr. Chair, and I don't want to put Derek at a disadvantage, but he, he may or may not be familiar with our very lengthy conversation about some potential additional funding opportunities for the digital divide conversation. So part of our rationale behind our recommendations there, Derek, were based on some conversations where we think there are some really viable alternatives for funding or programming in that arena. So I don't want to have you go forward without that additional information from our discussion.
This is the Google Fiber grant available.
So Google Fiber, as well as the library, actually is launching into a pretty extensive program. And we had a library briefing last week as well and they were pretty invested in some additional programming for access in at-risk populations or in high, in low uses populations. In particular, they were talking about Glendale and Marmalade and bumping up their programming there, so that was part of it as well.
Have we engaged with Big Brothers, Big Sisters on this potential extra funding from Google or the library?
So we have been in contact with Boys and Girls Club regarding their Google Fiber.
I'm sorry, Boys and Girls Club.
That's fine. And they, they've been in contact with Google Fiber and, and it's just really at its beginning stages of determining whether or not they can be partnered in, in the fiber technology. But what Boys and Girls Club would like is that their lead center is, is used as a community connections center. And, and the city has some say in where those community connection centers are located. And that would give them access to free Wi-Fi, some technology and things like that. It is not funding for salaries, but it is going to help support their digital network.
So this is my first go around with this. So I, I don't want to make it more difficult than it needs to be and I hate the thought of pulling funding from another organization. But there are organizations that I care about and I wanted to see fully funded, but I don't want to be a kink in the chain on this, so.
One question is with, what's the center called again? They're looking at the connection?
Community Connection Center.
Yeah. Do we know what's entailed in that yet?
We really don't. Other than to know, I heard from Noel Wachinshaw in CED that it is not dollars going to an agency, it, it is just technology support.
Technology support. And support could be pretty open-ended.
Right. I know, a little bit, right? But it's more Wi-Fi access. There is some hardware, some software, but it's not dollars going to the agencies or the location.
I'm just wondering if the, if the point is have connection, right? That means hardware, but also means they're looking at staff who can teach how to do it and maintain. If that's a piece of what the connection center has in any way, as far as is Google going to help with that, could we, could we support the mission anyway with a different private funding? And I don't know. Because we don't know yet what that looks like, but I know.
And the, Erin Mendenhall did a great job last week. She brought up the funding for the rape recovery center to the prior year's grant awards. So it was $35,000, right, Erin?
Yeah, it was up $11,000 from the mayor's recommendation.
So it is, it is what they've been funded in years past.
Okay. Well, I'm not willing to put some of these other organizations on the chopping block.
That's the problem that we have is that.
That's the way you got to play.
It's just, there's so many great opportunities for us to fund and never enough money.
Yeah. So Derek, I think the key here and the commitment that I think I heard from staff, and I'll get them to reinforce that on the public record this week, is that there are some opportunities with digital inclusion for the Boys and Girls Club specifically through Google, through possibly through the library, through the designation of them as a site through our process with Google. So I think the key is that we make sure we follow up on that and that's going to be critical for them to be successful. The component that they will miss, as mentioned, is that they won't have the salary support, but a lot of the programming components of it could be covered through other resources.
And will we have a voice on our process for?
I'm imagining that the council probably won't, although we can mention it during our Google briefing that's coming up in a week or two, but the staff certainly is very engaged in those site locations for their inclusion programs.
Okay. Thank you.
So if I'm hearing the discussion right, withdraw the additional funding added for those two items and then we would be at balance for CDBG.
Unless any of the councilmembers have any recommendations. Okay. If that is the case, councilmembers, show me if you're comfortable moving forward for purpose tonight if it comes up.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm invoking senior privilege here, I guess. This has got to be one of the smoothest CDBG processes I've ever been through. So I want to thank all councilmembers, including councilmember Mendenhall, who sort of led off with a very thorough examination here. But this truly was a, a great process, councilmembers, so thank you all for the collaboration on that.
Mr. Chair, can I continue the, the love fest here and thank Ben, who was completely willing to go out of his way to sit down with me and help me and take notes as I purge through this thing and, and found ways to balance a budget. And I, it would be really fun if we all did that next year and then we have conversing.
You said a present though, Erin, I'm going to just turn to you for every meeting.
Can I ask one question though? Moving forward in the future, the consolidated plans, the scores, how strong are those going to be and how important?
I think that's a really great question. Last week we spoke a lot about minimum amounts as well as grants and, and that and the consolidated plan score are really key pieces. So for our consolidated plan to HUD, one thing that's really key is if it does not qualify for the consolidated plan, we actually do not get to count those numbers towards our goal. So while we're continuing to fund really good, powerful organizations in the community, those numbers do not directly translate to the plan. So it's something to consider and, and it is very, very important as HUD and the general community at large, the philanthropic community moves towards more, more towards outcomes about maximizing funding, leveraging funding, it all ties into the consolidated plan and they're really encouraging a narrower scope, larger impact, larger dollar amount. So I think next year what we'd like to do is really do a lot more training on the forefront with our community members, with our organizations about how to qualify for the consolidated plan, how to submit a really meaningful application and then also really talk about what is the minimum amount that's reasonable to allocate so that we can start there. Will make for a harder discussion for you guys, I think.
And qualifying criteria too, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, it would be interesting for me, as a first time, this is my, obviously my, my maiden voyage down this, but looking at our process now that's complete, can we score ourselves essentially? As if, as if it was next year to some extent. How well do we follow that? What would be the anticipated sort of consequence of doing it this way, perhaps? So we can learn a little bit of our process and what it might change next year going forward, so we're a little prepared?
Yeah, that's a great idea. We can sort of do a summary based on your recommendations and then as we get geared up for next year conversations, we can bring that to you and actually put a number amount to sort of how many people or households or impact would and would not be qualifying for the plan. Is that?
Yeah, thank you very much. It, it's nice to sort of know, maybe this year it works, but next year if we do the same thing we did this year, could have some bigger consequences for us in a negative way. So it'd be nice to sort of learn from, I don't say mistakes, but learn from this process for me.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a great ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We are on to item number four, budget amendment number four for year 2015 and 16. That will be Jennifer Bruno, our deputy director in the council office. And Cindy has some new information for us. Do you want to start us off, Cindy?
Sure, thank you. And I was trying to write this down in some bullet points, but you guys are going through your agenda more quickly than I can write. I have been checking in with Patrick Leary, the mayor's chief of staff, about, some of the councilmembers had asked the question about is it possible for the legislative body, so to speak, whether that's the board or the city council of RDA, and that this pertains to tonight's budget opening, whether it's possible to retain advice and consent on some level. And there is a long process to do that kind of a convoluted way where you could make a department and the mayor could have that department report in whatever way she wants. So there's that route or what Patrick and I talked about was the possibility, and, and we'd need time to investigate this, but the possibility that the mayor could, may be willing to, to somehow document or legally specify that the, the board would retain its advice and consent. So that does to me look like a real possibility. We certainly would have to work it through with the city attorney and the mayor's office and the council ultimately. You're not being asked to vote on this tonight, I just wanted you to know that we had made that progress based on questions asked by councilmembers. So all of your options are still on the table, but it looks like that's a promising one. So we'll come back to you at your next briefing with that. You do have the one issue on your agenda tonight of, it's not on your formal agenda for voting, but on your budget opening about the economic development position. And previously, quite a few councilmembers had expressed support for the administration moving ahead on that position. And because this hearing for this budget opening is not until May 17th, you may want to specify again your position on that. It was my understanding from previous discussions that, that you were supportive, but they would need some, you know, better indication before they would dare move forward with a hire. So that's all I know.
So this, this budget amendment pretty much exclusively focuses on both what you had previously discussed as a redevelopment agency board and is sort of maybe, I could say, an initial step into creating the Department of Economic Development, although it does not actually create the Department of Economic Development. The administration has told us that that ordinance change and city code change to actually create the Department of Economic Development will be coming in conjunction with the budget, which will actually be next week, so we'll find that on Tuesday. But that this would sort of pave the way for them to hire a department director sooner than that. So what this does is it locates all RDA-associated FTEs in a new section on the city staffing document that I'm sort of maybe unofficially calling a temporary section in the staffing document because I think the administration's intention is to fold that section into the Department of Economic Development. But it would essentially be its own section on the city staffing document titled redevelopment agency. And it's where all of the RDA-associated full-time equivalent positions would go. Previously redevelopment agency positions weren't reflected on the city staffing document. So this is just sort of one step to, to bring them into alignment. There is a new position that was sort of first introduced during your guys' board meeting last time, but it's a financial analyst position that's proposed to be shared 50/50 between the redevelopment agency and general fund. And so 50% of the funds for that position would come from RDA and 50% would come from the city.
Jennifer, do you know if the intent is to house that in finance or house it in the RDA?
I, I believe the intent is to house it in RDA, but I'm imagining we would get more information on that.
So could we watch for that as it comes through?
Yep.
I imagine it'll come through as part of the budget process too.
Absolutely. The other sort of, I guess, FTE-related thing is that the full-time equivalent position that would have been the director of the redevelopment agency is being converted to an FTE for the director of the economic development department. So they're making that change in both the staffing document and the appointed compensation plan. So on the compensation plan where it says that there's a redevelopment agency director that is paid in this range, a pay grade, it would then be changed to say economic development director.
So I, I'm a little puzzled about this. I thought we were, we were trying to clean this up so that the economic development director would not receive funds from the RDA at all, so that they wouldn't have to be measuring, is this RDA work, is it in an RDA area, just to make it easier to track. We're no longer doing that?
Well, I think, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. What, that, that was another councilmember question. It's come up from several of you. We don't have that figured out. So that would be something else we would need to talk through with the administration this week as we work on the other.
Right. The current proposal.
But if that, you might tell, the current, yeah, you might do a straw poll or something to tell us what direction.
Right. The current proposal, based on budget amendment four, just the one we received, is to fund that economic development director position 50% with the RDA and 50% with the general fund.
But you still then have the, the tricky stuff, the tracking and all that.
The tracking of time. Yes.
And Lisa, I did raise this question as well because I think my comfort level is significantly higher in funding that through general fund and rather than trying to figure out how to restrict that money to a geographic, I mean, that 50% of that time through geographic area. We don't have any indication, because this is a new position, that somehow magically 50% of their work's going to be in a geographic RDA area and 50% of it's going to be for the rest of the city. And so I'm comfortable moving forward with looking at And so I'm comfortable moving forward with looking at that as a fully general fund-funded position. The other concern for me is that with this reconfiguration, realignment, I'm a little concerned that one sort of lead position in the RDA would be sufficient for all of the work they need to do, because there's typically been a couple of people. So I would have a preference to leaving that additional position funded in the RDA to see if there is a future need there. So there's always additional costs associated with creating a department, but I just think it's a cleaner thing to do, to fund a department head through the general fund.
And I'll just, just to clarify, the budget amendment does, so the 50% that would come from the general fund in the budget amendment is $16,500 for the remainder of the fiscal year. So if the council were to fund that position exclusively from the general fund, it would be $33,000 for the remainder of the fiscal year and then would be carried forward into the next year, if that makes sense.
And is that, that's a projection based on available money and the different, the increased classification of that position?
Right.
It's a new position, basically, so, okay. Jennifer, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm assuming that there's probably not any money to recapture in the process of positions that have been vacant in that department or in CED or anything like that. I'm guessing that's because of payouts for people who left and are along there with us.
You know, we'll have to, we'll have to check that. The council allocated a bit of money during the last budget amendment to pay severance, and so it's possible that there's some vacancy savings.
I would like to see if there were some money left in vacant positions, because we did have, we do have a couple of vacant, we did have some overlap in vacant positions there. And if that's a possible funding source for certainly this fiscal year, that would be worth considering, because I do have a recollection that we allocated some money for compensation in our last budget amendment.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll have to get with the administration on that, but I'll get that for the next briefing. And just to clarify, sorry, I had misspoke. The public hearing for this budget amendment is actually March 24th, sorry, May 24th, not May 17th. You could take action on that same night, however.
And is that sufficient time, Cindy, to work out details with the administration, you think?
It is.
Okay.
But I think they have been proceeding, based on your previous conversations on that economic development thing, so if you could give a courtesy tonight, feedback on that. I don't think you have to tie it directly to the RDA position or be that specific yet. We'll get the specifics done in all of your options and documentation that we'll get to you. But the real question is, are you okay on that establishing a department head position for economic development?
Do we know where they're at right now in that search?
I don't. I was just going based on the information that they said a week or so ago that they may, we're a couple, three weeks out. So if they have any candidates in the wings, they, those candidates probably would want to know something.
Indication the mayor gave last week that it would be pretty soon, actually.
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah.
And there is a note about advising consent, a sort of technicality, if you will. Because the council's not technically creating a Department of Economic Development yet, there's no department director to be advised and consented upon. And so, but the administration's indicated that they would proceed sort of in a manner similar to the advising consent process, so that they would bring this candidate before you and you would grant your advice or consent to that person and treat it as if it was a department director in code. That would be corrected when the city budget is presented next week in an ordinance change to city code to change the administrative organization, to make that clear.
And Jennifer, that, but that process for that would be similar to, I mean, that would be included in the budget process. So we wouldn't actually adopt that ordinance until we adopt budget ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, that's a great point.
So that timing would be the same, but we, but the direction you need from us today is are we okay moving in that direction?
Right.
Assuming that all of those things will line up and get adopted before June 22nd.
Right.
In line with what we've agreed upon with advice and consent.
Yes.
Council members, are you comfortable with that? That is unanimous.
And the only other minor sort of change to the, it's actually to the appointed compensation plan, other than the one that I mentioned before that changes the redevelopment director position on the compensation chart to the Economic Development Director position, is removing the designation of mayor to a senior advisor position. And that basically, that essentially clears a path for, if a department had a vacant position that it wanted to convert to a senior advisor-type position in any given department, there would then be a mechanism for them to do that. So this doesn't necessarily create any positions or add any money to the budget. It just sort of facilitates that designation in the appointed plan to be a little bit more flexible. Does that make sense? Hopefully it makes sense. Okay. I think that's it.
All right, Jennifer, we are so far ahead. But I am so grateful that Public Utilities is always on the ball and they're here. So if they're comfortable, we will move forward to item number five, the proposed Public Utilities Budget for 2016 and 2017.
Just two people in the way.
Great. So we have our new Public Utilities Director, Laura Briefer, and of course, LaHua Weaver. So you really put this together quickly with your finance department.
Really fast. So yes, I do have a couple of people that will join us at the table, but I don't mind starting right now. We're gonna have Kurt Sputte, our finance administrator, and Tom Ward, one of our deputy directors over engineering and the wastewater treatment plant side of things. So I prepared a short presentation in hopes that we have more time for conversation and discussion. But I thought since we have, you know, maybe a couple of new council members, we would give a little introduction to our Public Utilities Department. And then I'd just walk through the highlights of the proposed budget for each of our utilities. So the department manages both the capital operations, the maintenance, and capital improvement for four of our major municipal utilities. We have our water utility, our sewer utility, stormwater, and street lighting. Our water utility basically is all things drinking water. The geographic areas, as you might know, includes not only Salt Lake City corporate boundaries, but it also includes the eastern bench of Salt Lake County outside of the city. So we serve about 350,000 people in that area. Our sewer utility handles all sewer collection and treatment for Salt Lake City residents, so everything within Salt Lake City boundaries. We have about 650 miles of pipeline, 35 lift stations, and a wastewater treatment facility over in the northwestern part of the city. Our stormwater utility handles all drainage within Salt Lake City. We have a storm drain master plan where we have identified areas where drainage is important to protect property and public, the public during storms. And we also, within that program, we also have that special 25 cent riparian fee for riparian corridor improvements. I should also mention the water utility, we have a similar $1.50 fee for watershed protection and water rights acquisition. Our street lighting utility was added to the department in 2013, although it's long been a citywide function. We have, the purpose of our street lighting system is to illuminate our city streets and provide public safety and safe vehicle operation. Our streetlights, we have about 16,000 streetlights right now. And so I will walk through in more detail the budget for each utility, but just wanted to give a sense of the types of operations we have in all four. So the general overview for our proposed budget, we have almost $194 million budget proposed. Capital outlay and capital improvements are a large part of that budget. We've projected about $173.6 million in revenues for all four utilities, and we're proposing to use about $20 million in cash reserves. We are including the addition of two employees. One employee is to help us meet more stringent water quality standards on the stormwater side of things. And then the other employee is actually to replace two seasonals that we currently use in the storm drain side of our department. And that's really to, to create more efficiency in terms of maintenance and repair of our storm drains. And then we have, out of the four utilities, we have two proposed rate increases, one in our water utility and one in our sewer utility. So to the water utility, a little over $81 million budget. And in this utility, we are proposing a 4% rate increase.
And that is, is that for all 350,000 consumers of water?
Yes, yes. Although there is a multiplier out in the county beyond city boundaries. So this increase is actually driven in large part by increased water costs that are passed through from us, to us, from our wholesale provider, Metropolitan Water District of Salt Lake and Sandy. And the reason for those increased water costs have to do with some major capital improvement investments they've made on parts of the system that directly benefit our service area. And that includes the Point of Mountain Treatment Plant, as well as work on the terminal reservoir, which you can see going on down near 33rd South.
Mr. Chair, quick question. On that terminal reservoir, do you know about what the completion timeframe's gonna be on that? It seems like they've been working on it forever.
Yeah, I can get that answer for you. I don't have that off the top of my head.
And I know that's a metro question, not a...
Yeah, I think we have that information.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So our capital improvement program for water is $17.2 million. And in our capital improvement program, we've divided that investment over water line replacements, water treatment plant improvements. We have three water treatment plants that we maintain, some reservoir improvements, pumping plant upgrades, and some new automated meters that are gradually being replaced, our old existing meters. I also wanted to highlight that in our water utility, we have some additional investments that I think are very important. One is additional funding for watershed management. And so this year, we've proposed to update our watershed management plan. The last update was in 1999. We think this is a good year to do that, given other things that are happening within our watersheds, such as land use planning that the county's embarking on, forest planning, and the mountain accord process. Then the other piece of that is something new that we don't have yet in our watershed management plan, and that's a fire mitigation plan. And so really taking a look at what risks we have and how we might manage that.
Laura, can you talk a little bit about the, maybe about why this is a good year to do that when the mountain accord process isn't complete yet?
Yes, I think, I think that it ties in with the timing of the mountain accord process. So part of the mountain accord process proposes some different land management. And some of that is on national forest land in terms of a federal designation that may be introduced this year. And in part, there have been different proposals to the Forest Service. And then Salt Lake County also has its new mountain planning district in which they're required to do a resource management plan associated with that. I kind of think the time we're in right now, in terms of watershed management, really closely mirrors what happened in the 1980s, when the Forest Service and the county and Salt Lake City each concurrently conducted management plans so that there was a lot more holistic public engagement and thinking behind the different policies in those plans.
So you don't see that we would get invested in that development process and then changes could happen with the mountain accord process that would make us scrap a portion of our work?
Yeah. No, I think it's actually very good timing in terms of mountain accord, because we can even get a little bit ahead of that.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
And I have one other question on this slide. That 4% rate increase from metro, will you remind us, if you can, off the top of your head, how that looked last year? I feel like that was a much more steep increase last year and how the, I mean, it's the same story.
Right. It was, it was a 4% rate increase last year. And if you look at the next few years in terms of what we're projecting out, we actually have 4% rate increases out for the next few years. And last year, it was a similar situation with increased costs, water costs.
Which accumulates to a total rate increase of what, over how many years? That's the, that was the sticker shocker for me.
I think it's the sewer fund that actually has a huge...
Both, yeah.
57% over four years on the sewer fund.
That's right, that's right.
And, I'm sorry, I'm gonna jump on that. So my question is, it's a 4% increase this year, right, on the sewer fund?
On the sewer fund, we're, on waters, 4%.
On the water fund? There's no increase this year on the sewer fund?
No, the sewer fund, we're proposing a 12%, that's on the next slide, but a 12% rate increase.
For this year?
For this year.
So over five years, we're looking at a 69% increase?
That's, that's what we're projecting right now because of the...
Nutrient discharge regulations?
There are a number of capital projects. That is, the nutrient regulations are a main driver of the bonding that's needed. But we do, for instance, this year, we're also using some of that bonding for some master plan projects for the collection system and for a renovation of part of the sewer treatment facility.
The pump house, right?
Yes, the, yeah.
Yeah, that's gonna be a little bit difficult, I think, for constituents to wrap their hand around a 69% increase just in the sewer.
Yeah, and I think that's a really good point. And that came up quite a bit in our discussions around this budget and with our advisory commission as well. We are going to need to do a lot of public engagement around this. The capital improvements that are needed for the nutrient discharge and for the collection system are things that are really needed and, and things that we have to comply with federal and state regulations. That's what those accomplish.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think also, just a 16% increase this year, you've got to really do a good job of helping people understand what that is, because that's a huge jump in one year.
The 12% this year.
Well, 12% for that and then 4% with the water.
That's right.
So on your bill, you're gonna see a 16% increase.
Yes. And, and this year, we are also proposing to do an updated rate study for all four utilities. And in addition to the public engagement that is needed with these rate increases, the rate study process also allows us to do another, I think, a deeper public engagement process as well.
Laura, didn't we see that analysis last year of the pricing per, you know, for city and other municipalities our size? And we were still under once we went up on our percentage rate, if I'm not correct.
That's right. Yeah, so on page 27 of the presentation of our budget book, we do show where we would sit compared to other communities in terms of percent of income, what your bill would, what percent your bill would be as percent of income, as well as what our rates, what just the rate itself compares to with other utilities. And we're still quite, quite low, both for water and sewer.
Yes, and Cindy, just gonna clarify.
Oh, just a piece of history on the sewer utility. When the form of government first switched, the sewer utility had historically been underfunded. And it was out of a concern that the public wouldn't accept higher rates. And so it actually created generational problems because the area where the sewer plant is located was being directly physically impacted by the sewer plant and its overflow and those sort of things. So after, since that time, I think that the council has really led the way in making the generational decisions to keep everything on the right track. So we have, you know, pipes that are 100 years old and things like that. But in terms of, of being the stewards of the solid system that serves the needs and meets the regulations, the council has, as hard as it's been, has, has been biting that bullet and moving it forward. So it is tough, but there's a nice legacy that's behind... So it is tough, but there's a nice legacy that's behind the council.
Thank you. Let's see, did we finish water? I, I think the other, other portion on the water utility I wanted to point out is that in the fall of twenty fourteen, we completed a renewable energy plan for our utilities to look at opportunities across our department where we could actually generate energy using our infrastructure. And so examples of projects that really made it far to the top are hydropower projects, so projects at our Mountain Dell Dam, solar projects, so using our reservoir, big reservoir surfaces, closed reservoir surfaces for photovoltaic fields, waste heat recovery on the sewer system. So we did prepare this plan where we've ranked the feasibility and effectiveness of renewable energy. And so we have two projects in the budget to, to complete. One is designed for the Parley's Hydropower System, which actually ranks number one in terms of the amount of output we could get, and, and the fact that it could be used on that site as well. And then we also have a project, another hydropower project on one of our pressure-reducing valves located here in the valley on Fifth South. So our plan is to, every year, look at those opportunities for renewable energy.
So a question about that. So there was a media story last fall about the potential of having something internally, so within the pipe system, is that the, the pressure reducer that you're talking about?
Yes, that, that was that project, actually, Fifth South.
Very cool.
Yeah.
How much is that gonna be, how much power will that be able to generate?
So I brought a copy of our renewable energy plan, and that shows that, I can, I can actually show you where that is.
You know, if you, if there's, if, do you have that electronically?
We do.
If you can send that to the whole council, I think that would be very interesting. Because I do think that there are a lot of opportunities, and I really like the creativity that's gone into just what we're aware of with the, with the pressure reducer. And there are other opportunities, aren't there, within, I mean, we have other pressure-reducing locations that we can...
Yes, we do have other opportunities, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this standard practice in other communities as well, to install these kinds of infrastructure renewable energy projects?
You know, I don't know how widespread the, the practice is, but there are other communities who have looked at that. So we kind of modeled our plan off of what another couple of utilities have looked at as well.
And before Stan references it, Portland is one, Portland is...
I so was gonna go there, Charlie.
I know.
It's Charlie's favorite city.
I know, but on this one, this is, this is actually...
They've done some really cool stuff, yeah.
If we can follow Portland on, on this, I wasn't willing.
Where's Chris Smart to quote that?
Laura and I are going to be meeting soon to talk about the renewable energy analysis that was done, didn't of course anticipate the prison coming and the rapid development that could happen in Northwest Quadrant. So we're gonna meet and talk about some really far-out-there ideas, maybe, about the, the fact that we're gonna have, you know, what, ninety thousand people out there? Forty thousand people? How many people are out there, James? At the prison, moving out there all at once? No, it's ninety thousand people. Ninety thousand gallons of poop, maybe that's what it is? Anyway, but the, the idea that we're gonna get a whole bunch of people all at once, and we're building the utilities' infrastructure at the same time, there's a, I think there's an opportunity for some, some heat, waste heat recovery, just based on, on the amount, the volume, shall we say, that should be moving through those pipes. And the need to heat things up, so, she's on it.
I do think it's a great opportunity. So we've, we've actually included that analysis in the work plan, the scope of work, so...
Mr. Chair? I don't know if this is the best time to ask this, and if it's later, tell me, just be patient, and I will. And if it's been addressed and I just missed it, then I apologize that I missed it. As far as the concern we have about the water pipeline that runs under Highland Drive in District Seven that is aging and that we've been putting Band-Aids on for years, is there any long, any plan in the near term to, to do that? I know it was put off a little bit, waiting to see what was gonna happen with the street cars, so that the street wouldn't be torn up twice, but do you have any, any idea where we are on that?
Yeah, I'll let Tom address that.
Okay, thanks.
My underst, so you're right, we have original Jordan and Salt Lake canal, that's over a hundred years old, runs through there, and we've been waiting for the development and the city's other plans to come into place. I understand that those are now being triggered with some of the last pieces of development in there, and we're coordinating with that developer to do that work.
Great, so we, we don't need to think at any minute all of Sugar House is going to flood?
No, I think we've...
It could happen, but it's, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's see, we've, we have talked a little bit about the sewer utility and proposed twelve percent rate increase. This year, we're looking at bonding for about sixty, sixty-two million dollars. And as we've talked about, the rate increase here is really driven by the need for collection system and treatment plant capital improvement projects. As we look forward to the next six years, the driver is, is really the, the treatment plant projects to comply with nutrient regulations.
Laura, as part of your analysis, I'm just curious as to whether you evaluated on the nutrient component, because a lot of that's, some of that in the sewer system is related to what people put down the sewer system. Have you looked at an education component that ties with that? And is there any, are there any models where some of that was mitigated through education and change in behavior?
You know, I'm not aware of models like that. I know we do some education regarding what people put down their sewers in terms of fat soils and greases. I don't know if those are directly related to the magnitude in which we have to resolve the nutrient problems just from...
I, I'm not suggesting that that could happen in place of the improvements we need to install anyway, but I'm wondering if it mitigates any of those, so...
Yeah, that's a good question. Have you run into that?
That is a good question, and, and we do have elements of public education where the, what people choose to flush down the toilet actually reduces their costs. From our local limits process, that's where we go out to the businesses and limit what they might discharge. As Laura mentioned, the fat soils and grease not only impacts the sewer, that could create a...
And then there's some workaround prescription medications, because we have very well-medicated and not depressed fish or in our downstream system, because they're on lots of Prozac and Valium.
You're exactly right. I think one other element that's worth mentioning is our sewer rates actually is one of the few in the country that, as you discharge higher strength sewage, it costs you more. When the city, through the city council, adopted that about twenty years ago, we actually saw a reduction in our sewer flows and our loading, that the improvements we're asking for you to fund now might have been ten years ago, because the loading was going up so fast. So that conservation response was out of some public education, the rate structures we adopted then.
That's right. Good. Any more questions on the sewer utility side? We could come back to that if needed.
No, I just want to echo that we really do need to do a good job in, in advertising and educating on what is going on and why we're doing it.
Right, we agree.
That's key.
Yeah. And I, Tom, actually, as part of this big process in terms of the treatment plant upgrades and the collection system upgrades, part of the contract we have for managing those projects has a very strong public engagement component. So we have, the Langdon Group is working with us on that as well, and that's been impressed upon our team.
Well, not just this year, but for five years, to really just, so people aren't shocked every single year when their rate goes up.
Yeah, I agree. Stormwater utility, we're not proposing a rate increase this year, and we have a total budget of about twelve million dollars. I should note that we are looking at potential rate increases starting in twenty eighteen for the stormwater utility, as our, to keep our cash reserves healthy and to accommodate future capital improvement needs. I wanted to point out that we have budgeted four hundred and forty-eight thousand for repairing corridor improvements. We have three projects in that mix along Immigration Creek, along where it flows through the Bonneville Golf Course. We purchased those lands last year, I believe, and this year is that next phase of stream bank and stream, stream bed improvements. Also, in keeping with the need for us to continue to work really hard to make sure we're in compliance with our municipal separated storm sewer permit with the state, this is a water quality requirement, we're focusing very heavily on public outreach and education. We all live downstream type of education. Part of that, the stormwater utility is working with Tracy Aviary to prepare some really decent strategy in terms of educate, public education towards youth. So that's also included in this budget.
One of the concerns is developing nationally, well, globally, around wastewater is how much plastic actually gets flushed down our, our storm sewer systems. And so at this point, that's not regulated, is it?
It's, it's not regulated. I, was there something in our new permit that they, I don't think they did put that in our new permit.
So I, I'm curious as to what, if anything, we're doing about it. I was on a Jordan River cleanup a year ago, and, and the amount of plastic just was beyond belief, plastic bottles and plastic bags mostly, but, and I know that was just the visible, so I know it's all over in the system. But are, are, are we looking at any mechanisms for reducing that or collecting it? And I'm curious, I saw recently some work that Baltimore was doing in their system that was specifically designed to capture plastics out of their stormwater system, and I'm, I'm just wondering where we are on that and what you anticipate that looks like going forward.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a great question. So, so where our storm drain system outflows into the Jordan River, we have certain points where that occurs. We actually do have areas where we collect what our drainage supervisor calls floatables, and a lot of that is plastic and, and other garbage. I can't remember how many tons he says he collects on a monthly basis, but I had him prepare a spreadsheet not too long ago on that. We probably have some more opportunities to put those things into place at other strategic locations. So we do recognize it's an issue, and we do have some areas where we collect that.
So one comment on the, on the capital improvement program budget that you have listed, during our council retreat a couple of months ago, we talked about some potential possibilities using permeable concrete or other permeable surfaces around, directly related to stormwater collection, and, and how that could potentially help with some of the urban forestry goals that, that we have, and some of the street trees that have been impacted with residents trying to do the right thing and reduce water consumption or water use. You know, we've seen a great deal of stress on, on our urban forests. Have you spent, do you know if your department has spent much time looking at permeable surfaces and how that could potentially be used as we're spending some of that five point four or five point five million dollars on, on capital improvement?
Right, yeah. We don't have any permeable surface projects in this budget. We did do a pilot project out in front of Wasatch Torre on Seventh East, and I think that's first for South. And, and I, I would be interested to see how that has worked. I think there's also maybe a larger part of that question, too, in terms of low-impact design and complete green streets, and how we use natural infrastructure in coordination with, with streets and with urban forestry to really put a holistic effort in managing stormwater. And that's something we have been doing a lot of research on.
And can I add on to Charlie's comment? There are a lot of communities, in particular where there's heavier rainfall, but there are a lot of communities that are looking at swells and, and ways to manage stormwater closer to the source rather than at the end of it. And have we looked at that? Are we, I mean, it seems like, I mean, there are some options we might want to consider for managing some of our thunderstorm, hike, you know, volume storms in the summertime, which have washed out Northeast a couple times.
I, I agree, and that is something that we have been looking at. One project that we completed recently at nine hundred South on the Jordan River was to rebuild that, was a more of a drainage ditch, and we created a wetland out of that, and it both helps slow, slow the runoff into the river, and in doing so, kind of filters out some of the pollutants, and I think creates a, kind of a better system that way. So we're watching the function of that as well. Tom, did you have something to add?
As Laura mentioned, that's, is something that we've been really looking into, and glad to hear that it's something that you're aware of, that the industry's going towards, as we've been addressing our drainage, our water quality needs. And then one that you, you've asked us to really look into, the curb and gutter and those sorts of things, has brought us to some of these newer technologies and working closely with a city engineer, and having, as Laura mentioned, the complete green streets. So we're looking for opportunities to do those types of projects, and the best ones is where we have a water quality issue, like you mentioned, and maybe a road problem, and then a curb problem. We're looking for those opportunities with the funding that we have.
Councilmember Minnahan and I were in Seattle a year ago, and saw some extensive stormwater sort of swell mitigation work that they had done in conjunction with some road reconstruction and a huge investment in new residential properties. And I don't remember the exact amount, but they significantly reduced the runoff from an area of the city that wasn't being mitigated at all. It was going straight into their water system, and in a really interesting and attractive way that fit very well in the neighborhood. It literally was a linear park that they created that was all about stormwater runoff. So it, I, I know we don't have the volume that Seattle does, although, yeah, it's not raining now. But it feels like there are some, in particular, I'm looking, thinking some of the, the off-the-hill on the East Bench areas where we've had some problems, some flooding problems we have because the current system doesn't handle the big thunderstorm runoff problems, so... Thanks.
Let's see, our last utility, street lighting, we have a total budget of three point two million, and that includes a million of capital improvements. I think a big, big push in our system is the continued upgrades to high-efficiency lighting. And I, so far, I think, since we've taken on the utility, we have upgraded thirty-one percent of our lights to high efficiency.
Thirty-one percent of the city?
Thirty-one percent of all the streetlights in the city.
So I recall, and I don't remember the timeline, I want to say it was a ten-year plan, but when we, the council adopted that, we went to it with a higher rate specifically to accelerate high efficiency, and are we on track for that?
We are, I think we're ahead of track. Actually, we've been working closely with our electricity, electric energy provider, and have actually been, been using some of the rebates and grant programs with them, too.
So I really appreciate as well how on top you have been of wire theft, because I know, it's not nearly, I know you're still having some, but it's not, doesn't feel like it's at the rate it was previously, where we were losing significant amounts of underground wire, and even above-ground wire, I understand. So that's been noticeable. So any sense of where that is? Is it in decline, or is that, are you just on top of it more?
I'm not sure. It, you know, may depend on the economy, the ups and downs of, of the theft. But I, we do have a really great team that's managing our street lighting program, and I know that they're, they're very much on top of it.
Thanks.
And this is more of just kind of a petty thing, but on your presentations, sometimes like on, on this image, you'll have a picture of a, of a streetlight that is not part of the streetlight utility.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
And that, if we, if you can kind of work on making sure that when we talk about streetlights... streetlights, we show the actual streetlights, because I just, I got an email today from somebody who, you know, I'm, so, I mean, it's been, what, four years since we've done this, and I'm still explaining the difference between neighborhood lighting and street lighting. And so, like I said, it's a petty issue. Don't spend, you don't need to spend a lot of time, but just for future reference.
That was my fault. I chose that image.
Well, it's a great picture.
There's some gray streetlights in rural parts that are part of the streetlight system, so.
But it's true that the only unifying concept that I ran into was more lighting like this, and we don't have any of it. And so, Charlie's point is right. I mean, people don't differentiate very clearly.
Within the street lighting utility, we'll be coming back to you with the proposed budget for the enhanced street lighting, as you know. So, you should be seeing a transmittal for that pretty quick.
Discussion.
Any more discussion? That was great. I like that.
I have a couple of, one comment. I want to reinforce how much I appreciate your outreach, in particular around the pump station installation and upgrades you've been doing up on Capitol Hill. But you've been really great about reaching out to that community, and there was initially some concern about that, but it's gone really well. And through the process, Public Utilities has been really engaged in that community there, and I think it shows when I have conversations at the community council meeting. So, thank you for that outreach component. I think it was critical in getting that done successfully. I do have a question about the watershed acquisition budget and the plan. You mentioned that you're doing a reevaluation of that plan. Do you, do you have a timeframe on that? And I'd like to know what the balance is, if you're familiar with what the balance is in that fund, what the timeframe is for your plan, and what the process is for bringing proposed properties for acquisition to the council.
Okay. So, yes, I do know what the balance is currently in the fund, and I've.
It might be helpful, I don't know, new council members, if you're familiar with this fund, but it might be helpful just to explain how we.
Right. So, the Watershed and Water Rights Acquisition Fund was implemented first in 1989, and during that, I think when it was first implemented, it was a 25-cent extra fee on each customer's water bill. Since 1989, it's gone through two or three increases. Currently, it's $1.50 on each customer's bill. That generates now about $1.5 million a year. And so, we do have criteria for purchasing watershed lands, and that's, you know, based on where it's located, it's based on value, it's based on leveraging some other opportunities. And actually, I think we've prepared that criteria for you in the past, and I'm happy to bring that back toward you, to you. That fund is also used for water rights purchases, and we have and still do use it for water rights purchases. So, very important fund for us in terms of continuing to protect our municipal watersheds and in terms of acquiring water rights that are of great value to our community. Currently, as of June 2015, I believe our balance was around $5.3 million. Since 1989, I think we spent around, spent around $12 million on mostly property, some water rates. At the end of this fiscal year, subtracting out land that we've purchased this year, and assuming we don't buy anything else before the end of this year is over, it should be around $6.2 million. We are working on a couple of, one property and a couple of water rights transactions potentially right now.
So, is your, is your plan going to reevaluate just what your targets are and perhaps criteria? Or what's your expectation?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be a really good, so currently, our watershed management plan has a, basically has a policy statement in it with respect to the importance of purchasing lands for watershed protection purposes. And the plan itself doesn't go a whole lot into the criteria, but we have developed that, and I think it would be nice for us to bring that through again during this process and make sure our criteria are still, you know, up to date with current pressures and conditions.
Thanks.
So, I have a question, Laura, and it's in regards to Metro. Does Metro have a fee for acquiring and protecting their watershed as well?
I don't know. They don't, they do not do that.
So, do we try to stick within our boundaries then, or are we also going out and purchasing property that would protect Metro as well?
Well, Metro, so, we only purchase properties within the central Wasatch range that are our watershed. So, that's Little Cottonwood, Big Cottonwood, City Creek, and Parley's Canyon, and then some areas along the ridge lines that connect those. Metropolitan Water District treats our water supply from Little Cottonwood Canyon. And so, you know, we.
But we own the water rights in the canyon.
We hold the water rights that they treat for us. And Sandy City as well holds water rights in Little Cottonwood Canyon that Metropolitan treats for us. So, we, so we have a partnership in that protection.
Does Sandy City have any ability to acquire property there? And do we coordinate with them?
Yeah, you know, I don't know if they purchase property. They, I know they have a watershed ordinance that mirrors ours, but I don't know if they have a fund similar to ours in there. Do they? Okay.
They do?
I think so.
The table's saying they do, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are, if council members are fine with this, we'll just, since we're ahead of schedule, we'll just dive straight into the downtown plan if they are here. Molly, is she here?
Molly.
Okay, great. I was just thinking we'd jump right into the downtown plan and then take a break. She just wanted to grab Russell. And Molly was here, so. So, while we're waiting for those who are involved with the downtown plan, Cindy has some analysis.
Okay. The Wasatch-Trent Regional Council, last time we were together, we talked about their regional transportation plan. They were having a small area meeting, and the council indicated that you'd rather have them come, which they offered to do, come to give you a briefing. We found out more since then, and it really looks like you could miss out on an opportunity for policy input if we don't send some representatives to this. So, they're asking all of the local governments to limit the number of people they send, but they did say that they would reserve three slots for us, for city council members. And so, this is on June 29th at Little America, and we wanted to see if we could, if there might be three council members who could go.
Stan.
And?
Okay. Now, I might be running amok, because I'm seeing May 18th.
Is there a different date?
Is there two?
There's two. So, the small area meeting is May 18th, the Wednesday from 3:00 to 5:00. That's at South Salt Lake City Hall.
Yeah, I'm thinking Erin, she's been involved with the Wasatch Regional Council in the past.
Erin and Derek, are you?
Okay, so we'll circle back with everybody. And then, it looks like there's a health summit relating to transportation on June 29th. So, we'll put this on again next time. And then, the other issue is.
On the back.
On the back, and that is, we just received word yesterday about the National Alliance to End Homelessness. It's a conference, their national conference, which is apparently very, very, very helpful and very well-attended. So, it's had good reviews from people who have gone in the past. It's July 26th to July 28th. At least one of the council members has a conflict with a wedding. But if there are council members who want to go, the chair and vice chair were in particular thinking that maybe the subcommittee for homelessness would be interested in going to this. So, one of those folks is not able to, but.
So, Cindy, this is, this is not one of our pre-approved conferences. What do you need from us? I mean, I would recommend that we provide the opportunity to the subcommittee and see about their availability, but I'm okay with like three slots. But I would, yeah.
So, Stan has suggested three slots.
Well, I mean, as a starting point, maybe, and I'm okay, if there's other people who are, if there are other people who are interested, I'm fine with that as well.
I'm completely fine if there are council members that want to go that are not in the subcommittee or in RDA leadership.
I can go to Two Queen Bedroom if you like. Be easier. Double lock, can you see, right?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm gonna skip that one. I'm not sure.
He was offering to make it a college trip, I think is what he was.
Charlie's here. Charlie wants to go.
All right. So, follow up with Tracy, if you're interested in that.
Yeah, I would be interested in going, so.
Yes. Tracy's reserved five spots.
Okay, great.
Because she's.
Smart.
Smart.
She's smart. She's smarter than we are, so that's good.
Okay. Then, there's an update to the annual meeting calendar. We don't know how, we lost track of this, but the May 17th council meeting was originally scheduled for both a work session and a formal meeting, but we really usually only would do two formal meetings in May. So, the 17th would just be a work session, because if we, if we have lots of formal meetings, then you can't get through the budget deliberations. So, we will have two opportunities for budget opening, or, sorry, regular budget public hearings. So, instead of just one, we'll have two. One is the 24th, and the other is the first Tuesday in June. That's it.
Thank you, Cindy. We're gonna move on to item number six, the downtown plan. Come on up, Nick. We have Nick Norris from.
We're actually waiting for the presentation that, I guess there's a snafu and getting it loaded, but maybe Molly went to go get that so we can get it on here, but in the meantime, maybe we'll let Russell do his intro. If he has it, it happens, it's fine.
Really, the, the staff's comments on the downtown plan are, they're probably, I probably have three of them. One is, I want to draw your attention to the attachment, the first attachment to the downtown plan that says, it's titled "City Council Priorities in Proposed Master Plan." And given the list of those priorities, it seems to me that, that the plan appears to accomplish some of the things that the council discussed, particularly in economic development and affordable housing and homelessness that the council discussed in January. The second thing I'd like to say without taking too much thunder from the planning division is that this is a plan that has involved a lot of work over a long period of time and is, and if I may, the foundation of this plan is built on previous plans, and this is a compilation of several ideas that were in those plans. And the third thing I would like to mention is that under the, under the policy questions, the most pertinent one is number one, since the proposed plan was first transmitted, and it was transmitted in February, has anything changed demographically, economically, or in terms of property development that would warrant revising the plan? That's an open-ended question. It's not, doesn't have an answer. It's for the council to think about. So, with that, I'll let the planning division go ahead.
Thank you, Russell. I'm very pleased to share with you the downtown plan today. The plan is very significant for several reasons, which I will review briefly with you today, but I want you to know that the plan is a result of significant public engagement process, as Russell mentioned. And next week, we will ask you to open a public hearing to initiate the adoption process for this plan. My name is Molly Robinson, and I am the urban designer for Salt Lake City, and I've had the pleasure of being the project manager for the downtown plan for the last three and a half years, initiating this process from the very beginning and developing the work plan. We've briefed the council on this in the past, though some of the newer council members may not have been briefed on this. So, I will try and give you the broad brush overview. But yes, our plan is the result of a big effort. The master plan itself is a vision of where we want to go. It is a roadmap of how we will get there. It talks about what we want downtown to look like and provides a framework for monitoring to understand how we know we've reached the goals that we've outlined in this plan. As I've said, the public engagement process was very significant on this process, and we used a number of different public engagement techniques that the city has never used before. Many, several of you, I know, were involved in some of those specific activities and events in particular. And this process has had a lot of input from people all over the community, from residents to business owners, and has received a lot of support from them. The plan itself features kind of four big ideas, the first of which is this idea of a jobs-housing balance and trying to create a real 24-hour activity downtown with obviously a lot of economic activity, but also the residential activity growing to balance out all of that, so that there's people downtown 24 hours a day. The plan also does heavily focus on downtown as a major commercial engine for Salt Lake City, for the county, but also for the Wasatch region in general and for the state of Utah. It plays a very significant role. Livability is also a major feature of the plan, the idea of neighborhood amenities and choice in balance with housing and jobs. And then, obviously, downtown and its role as a major destination, one that should be and is internationally recognized. I'm gonna go ahead just for a second to the map, so you know exactly where we're talking about in terms of downtown. Our planning area for this project was bounded by North Temple, Second East, Ninth South, The vision for the, in this plan that's articulated is that downtown Salt Lake will be the premier center for sustainable urban living, commerce, and cultural life in the Intermountain West. This vision is supported by 10 principles. I'm not gonna read all of them, but housing choice, vibrancy, and prosperity are the first three, and upfront for a reason, which relate back to those four big ideas I talked about. The principles are articulated more, more fully through 47 goals and 239 initiatives, which sounds like a major, a major initiative in and of itself, but all of these goals and initiatives really are very much the direct result of the public engagement process, and these ideas came almost word for word directly from that and have been massaged and edited since, since kind of their initial articulation. There are five kind of major projects or key moves identified in the plan. These, these key moves really have a significance as great as the downtown itself, the, one being the cultural core, the downtown. being the cultural core, the downtown streetcar, the extension of tracks, and a green loop or green infrastructure, Greenway project, and then the support of professional sports in the downtown. There are 10 kind of districts identified within the downtown, and there are... There is a catalytic project identified for each of the districts. In the Temple Square District, it is the development of Block 85, which is a surface parking lot today. In the downtown... In the Salt Palace District, it's the development of the Convention Center Hotel. In the Central Business District, it's the development of another surface, 10-acre surface parking lot in our downtown. In the Civic Center is the... Some improvements to the public realm. In the South State District, zoning changes and some performance standards to really call up, call some new development activity to that area. The connection to Ballpark for the Central Ninth. Infrastructure improvements in the Granary. The Grand Boulevards Project in the Grand Boulevards District. And the Station Center Project within the Depot District. And I know that some of these ideas are very much in line with activities and initiatives that the RDA has undertaken, so I don't need to go and develop... Talk about those in too much detail today. And then in the Broadway District, the development of our mid-block and further development of our mid-block walkway network. How the plan will be used going forward, the idea is that it will help... The impact of it will help direct decision-making, both with you, but also with the Planning Commission. It sets a baseline in understanding the downtown and where we are now. It sets some measurable outcomes or targets for where we want to go, and then it provides kind of a basic monitoring framework. In terms of directing growth, and that is kind of the essence of all of our master plans, is that we're directing growth and development through our planning efforts. The idea that's articulated in the plan is that we will still remain... We will still continue to have one major center of activity, and that is our Central Business District. And that that will grow in intensity, and that intensity will step down as you move out of that Central Business District. But we won't have kind of two major centers within our downtown as a other idea. The idea is that the Central Business District intensity will grow to the south and west, and that we will define qualities of the livable city. A quality built environment and simplified zoning are mutually beneficial. This is an idea that we can make our development process supportive of a downtown that everyone is going to be able to identify. It has a unique image, but we're not going to try and mire that in additional hurdles. That's that idea of growing. The big takeaway here is that the downtown will be the center for urban living and a commercial engine. As I mentioned, the downtown plan will... The plan builds the image of the downtown and creates that identity as an internationally recognized destination. It aligns transportation and land use. So this downtown plan is the complementary plan to the 2008-adopted Downtown in Motion Plan, which has the same boundaries. It directs public and private investment, so the idea of public realm improvements, the urban landscape, and that cultural life is supported by that urban environment. Our planning process has been on the longer side. We are in that adoption phase of the project now, and we are very excited to be here and have that conversation with you today. In terms of alignment with your 2016 City Council priorities, as I mentioned, economic development is a major theme throughout the plan. Each of the 10 principles, for example, talks about the economic relationship of that principle in the downtown. Affordable housing and homelessness are also discussed at length in the downtown plan. And street maintenance isn't... As it's defined as a council priority, isn't directly incorporated into the downtown plan, but we do talk about streets as a major aspect of public life in the city. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, get some direction from you on this plan, and I'm excited to move forward.
I think everyone's ready for you to move forward.
Awesome.
Derek.
Thanks for all the work you've put into this, Molly, and the entire planning staff. I remember meeting you at the local first warehouse about two years ago, maybe three years ago, and when you were, you know, knee-deep in putting this together, and it's been a long time coming. So I appreciate all the work you've put into it, and I look forward to adopting it. I know that a number of revisions have gone into this, and I've read through this a couple of times over the past 18 months or so, and have appreciated the work. The long-range planning is exciting, and I'm looking forward to adopting this so that we can start referencing it in some of our other smaller decisions that we make as a body. I don't have any major feedback that I haven't already offered to you in other formats, but I just wanted to appreciate all the work you've put into this.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just... Can you go back to the first slide where it talks about the five points? Where it had streetcar, tracks? Oh, what else? Oh. There. Streetcar, tracks extension. Boy, I'm just wondering if we can incorporate bus service in there, you know, instead, or just tie it in there, streetcar slash bus service. I just think that's...
Okay.
Another opportunity for us. I just, you know, funding, of course, for rail is so much more expensive than looking at bus, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That actually is a good point. I think what might be nice as well, are you planning to do any cross-referencing with the Transportation Department? I know that they're working on the Transit Master Plan, and Andrew and I and Stan... Andrew Stan and I received a briefing on the Transit Master Plan the other day, and so I'm just wondering if, you know, you're planning to incorporate some of the elements that will be in that plan into the downtown plan?
I think it's been a little bit of a challenge for us just because of the timing of the two plans. When we sent this, obviously, to the council, the Transit Master Plan was very, very early in that process. But it is something that can certainly be done at any time. But we have worked on part of our internal team. Transportation has been a part of that, and we've met several times with... Many times with them to make sure that we are not just addressing transit, but all modes of transportation within the plan. And so we have coordinated it with things like the Bicycle and Pedmaster Plan and other planning documents from transportation as well.
So Nick, we're sending this to a public hearing, so we saw a little bit of time, but I'm wondering if you could review it for us and suggest that maybe even if we include a reference to the Transit Master Plan, that might at least cross-pollinate those two plans. So if there's a way to insert that or to insert a couple of the components that we think are gonna be in there. But it might be premature to adopt this before we know exactly, but we can certainly reference the transit plan. I would be comfortable with that.
Yeah, it's important to note that I believe all of the transportation-related things in this plan came from already adopted documents.
Yeah, I know that just with my short meeting that I had is that, you know, they're not really... I mean, of course, circular is something that they're looking at, but it's a little bit different than just circular. They're actually looking at, you know, linear equations and getting across east-west. So that's why I think if we could just put bus in there and tie it in together or look at... Of course, we can always adopt a change and look at it that way, but bus service is key for, I think, getting around.
And I think, you know, just in our preview, without giving too much away on the Transit Master Plan, the clear takeaway was that Salt Lake City residents preferred an increase in bus service as well. And so I think referencing the upcoming Transit Master Plan, like Stan mentioned, in the downtown plan would be smart.
Great. Thank you.
I'm not as tied to specific forms of transportation as much as the concept of mobility in different ways, so I'll have some discussions on this, but I don't want to be tied down to one form or another, because what works in the central core is not necessarily what's gonna work to combine central core with the outlying areas of the city. So I'll have discussions about it, but I understand where you're coming from, and I'd like... I think the master plan should talk more about transportation corridors and how development comes along those than the actual type, because fixed rail line is gonna bring different sort of permanent development than a bus route is, and it changes some things that way, so.
That's just be said, in Salt Lake City, as well as other cities, use BRT as a way of promoting growth too. So it's just... It's whichever way you look at it.
And so that's why, I guess, I make the pitch again that we reference the transit plan, because the transit plan will address all of those modes in relationship to the core and the entire city. So perhaps that's a way we can work it into the process. They're all important, and I understand the reason we highlight streetcar and track extension here because of the process that we've been going through with the downtown community in particular around conversations of those two particular pieces. But I think we need to be pretty broad about that transit incorporation somehow, so...
And Mr. Chair, if I may, I think that's one of the components that the Transit Master Plan will include is are transit options based on density. So the city will have an array of transit to choose from.
Well, and it's looking at trip generation, and I mean, it's doing a really deep dive on where people are traveling, where they will need... And projecting where people are traveling, so I feel really comfortable, based on the briefing we had yesterday, that referencing that connection reinforces that direction, so.
We'll look for ways to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't know how I have missed this all the times I've looked at this, starting clear back when I was on the Planning Commission, but it seems to me one thing we aren't talking about here is education in the downtown plan, because we've talked about wanting to make downtown a place where families would want to live, but we haven't talked about schools and how we can promote that. And that seems to me be a missing point that would be really important if we want downtown to be a place for every type of family to live and not just millennials who are single.
And the... If I may respond to that, the downtown plan does focus pretty heavily on figuring out or pushing for everyone to help figure out the idea of family housing. And what does a really urban family housing unit and concept really look like in Salt Lake City? It's gonna be different in Salt Lake City than in, you know, other cities across the country or the world.
Like Portland.
Like, I didn't say that specifically. But, you know, the idea of family housing obviously is gonna fall in line with the education aspect.
Right, and that's... That's why I think we want to be sure we're addressing that, and maybe we talk a little bit to the school board to make sure we're not ahead of them too much, but that they're... They recognize where we're wanting to go with this, so that we have that as a piece of it, because we want to have really vibrant, great schools. You know, if I have a choice and I'm gonna move someplace, I'm gonna pick... And I have little kids, I'm gonna pick where there's good school district and good neighborhood schools. And if we're not helping to promote that, and I haven't quite yet in two years figured out how the City Council helps us have stronger schools, and I don't know that it's necessarily our problem to solve, but I think we need to work really hand-in-glove with the school board and figure that out, because I think that's one component that would really help with downtown if people feel like, yeah, I can live here and my kids don't have to go to a private school. I don't have to be able to afford Roland Hall to live downtown.
Right, and Roland Hall isn't downtown.
Right.
So, you know, providing multiple educational opportunities from the university level down to daycare within the downtown is... There are a number of articulations within the plan about kind of that broad range of educational opportunities. We have a school district representative on our advisory group.
Great.
And so we can ping him and ask for some additional...
Okay, I just, in looking at this, it's like, okay, I'm not seeing that spelled out quite as clearly as these other parts, but I think you really did great work on it.
So, Mr. Chair, this item is scheduled for a public hearing May 3, which is next How would you like the revisions addressed between then and now?
Council members, I just feel like if we just sit somewhere in there, talk about transportation, that we address the Transportation Master Plan, I'd feel comfortable moving forward.
And Russell?
Aaron?
Transit.
Transit.
Not transportation.
Sorry, transit.
Russell, I think if we can look at moving forward to that modification from our perspective, and then just see if there are any additional things that come out of the public hearing process, I wouldn't want to say that we're final until we have that opportunity. But considering the hearings we've had in the past, this feels really good, and I think the Planning Department's done a good job of incorporating those comments that we've had previously, so I would expect that...
So is it my understanding that the final version will contain items that the council addressed today, plus public comment?
If there's any public modification, yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask...
Erin.
I wanted to ask a question, follow-up to Lisa's about schools, and how your work on this might have informed the reality from state about proximity of schools to bars and the restrictions that places on the downtown area. I'd love to see a map, if there ever were one, of how... Of where the holes are, where schools could be based on where bars are right now, but can you talk about that at all? And if we should put that on the... On our legislative list?
Yeah, it's... You know, something that fine detailed usually isn't something that we wouldn't address in a master plan, but it's more of a zoning type of thing, because the state does place both a 200-foot radius and a 600-foot walking distance from schools, particularly in other uses. We can't locate margin facilities in...
So 200-foot as the crow flies, 600-foot walking.
In the primary pedestrian route, and so that is a huge concern for us. So for example, it probably wouldn't be the best location for a school to be in the Central Business District, but on the periphery, it probably is okay, knowing that we're gonna have some of those impacts. And there are some things that the state will not allow variances from those distances, and schools is... The 200 feet with schools is one of those, so.
So I can see where we might be able to accommodate the 200 feet from schools, but if we start looking at 600 feet, we're talking about a full block. That's problematic, and some of the comments we're getting from developers is that one of the concerns is walking distance to a school from downtown. And I'm having this same argument with the school district representatives. They say, oh, well, we've got Lowell, and we've got Washington. It's like, and they're not understanding that people are really looking for options where they don't have to drive their children to school, and that's a real foreign concept, I know, but that's the feedback we're getting. Now, it's anecdotal, so I don't know the reality of that, but certainly the direction we seem to be heading with two, three-bedroom apartments immediately surrounding the core and encouraging that kind of development suggests that we will probably have kids, and that we could presume, I think, that that would be a priority for them. So I think a couple of... that would be a priority for them. So I think a couple of issues we might have to address, and I appreciate that it might not reflect in the master plan, but we might really have to have some legislative exception carved out if we're going to provide schools in a business district. Because it's going to get really, we've got competing interests going on there. I guess my concern is our conversation with the school district, I don't know what your success has been, but I'm still not getting them to understand that the core means the core and not, you know, a driving distance from the core. So, good luck with that. I'll keep working that ankle, too.
Thank you, Nick and Molly, and of course, Russell, we appreciate you.
That's all right.
We are going to take a 15-minute break, and we will come back at 3:40 and move on to item number eight, which is the Council retreat 2016 priorities and other projects.
We're going to do the hotel, D4 height?
Yeah, we're going to do that after. We're going to do eight first and then go back to number seven.
That's fine, thank you.
Thanks.
I just have a quick introduction to the work on council priorities and active projects. And then I think probably the best use of time would be for Allison to have, to take the mic and just ask the council some of her questions on next steps for economic development and things like that. As the council knows, the start to the year has been fairly quick and busy. And so there's been a lot going on that staff has been participating on. At the top of that list really has been the council's priorities. Early in the year, the council set the priorities and the projects, and staff has been working on developing the scope for those and getting the first steps underway. Probably the most notable highlight is, in fact, the economic development fact-finding that the council held last week. And in addition to that, there's also a lot of other progress being made. Housing initiatives and some state funding and a site selection committee with regard to homelessness is underway. And that is advancing the council's priority there quite nicely. There's also, of course, tonight, the conclusion of CDBG. A lot of staff time has gone into that. Several land use items, and we're at the brink of the annual budget and the CIP. And along with that, probably the beginning of a lot of council-level work on the infrastructure priority will start to occur. I know that the administration has been working and coordinating on a report for that to come to the council. And so that will come probably sometime in May, and if not, towards the end of the budget season for discussion later in July. And with that, unless there are questions from the council on any of the attachments that were provided, we can turn time over to Allison for the economic development discussion.
Any questions? Okay, we'll jump right into it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you may remember from last week, when we had our fact-finding session, that marked an important stage in the, in the process that the council has undertaken to talk about economic development as a city with the public, public discussions. But I want to go back before then to the briefing that was held on February 9, when the council straw-pulled the what success looks like for this, for this priority. And it was essentially approval of an economic development strategic plan. And in that sense, I think there's a lot of work that could be done as staff on sort of the codification of the elements and criterias that would be addressed in any such plan. The other important thing that was done on February 9 was the issue of making sure this is a public and year-long discussion leading to some real, some real progress from the council on economic development issues. And so we've continued that. And that fact-finding, as well as an open city hall and other outreach processes, have been part of that initiative. Another agreement coming from last week was that there will be more fact-finding sessions that will, will work out the details of those as we go along. The staff will try to come up with a proposal that makes sense and then for your review. And the next one is tentatively planned for September 20. And then finally, we, you have agreed to have us advance on the building services audit, which will be a significant chunk of quarter-two time on this priority. So those are the big, the big things we've been working on. And if it is the council's desire, we could talk about some policy questions from that staff report and see if we can make progress on those.
Council members, any questions? Points of clarification? This is really easy, Allison. You do such great work.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
So from last week, it seemed like, you know, we gathered quite a bit of information from, you know, Local First, the Downtown Alliance, and then some of the state-level leaders on economic development. And we got a lot of information. And it seemed like maybe we ought to refine that a bit for your workload and maybe, you know, kind of pick a winner, so to speak. You know, are we going to go after, you know, recruiting big businesses and the large employers? Or are we going to look more at local businesses and incubation and things of that nature? To my colleagues, I'm wondering, does it seem like maybe we should pick a strategy going forward on that? Like, a little more refined direction for staff?
I think that we probably should. I'd love the staff to react to that. But I'd like us to have more discussion since with the fact-finding night, we didn't really, we asked questions of our presenters, but we haven't worked through it as a body yet. So I guess I want more discussion about what we heard and where, what we feel as a body. And maybe that's just part of coming up with a strategy.
Okay. So what is our strategy going forward then? Because I guess I'm a little unclear about how we move forward on economic development.
So one of the things we did is, based on the previous three discussions now we've had on economic development, has come up with a list of ideas that have been presented to the council or discussed in outside conversations. That is in a, it's in your folders. I sent an email earlier this, this week, no, this day, whatever time period we're talking about. And so one idea would be to go through those. I would, I would hesitate to pick a winner in that sense, in a very strict sense of we're going to go all in on this or all in on that. I think typically, an economic development strategy is more successful to the extent that it actually picks several winners. Because we can't, we can't control as a city which of these, which of these strategies is going to take off best. There are all sorts of, you know, external factors, timing, national macroeconomic trends, different companies, policy decisions or strategy decisions. So I think it would make sense to choose, maybe to prioritize among the strategies, but I'd be hesitant to, to just focus on one.
And, Mr. Chair, if I could just add to, I think that some, you know, it's very useful to have a tracking list of everything that's been heard and get your guys' input and discussion and feedback. Some of these things, and Allison's sort of gone through an initial review of some of the things that were identified in Enterprise SLC, fall very easily into the administrative category. And some things fall very easily into the council category. And then some things are sort of a combination of both. And, and so to the extent that we can kind of keep an eye on that, I think there are probably a handful of things that are good for your discussion, but are really sort of out of the realm of the council's control necessarily. Although there are a series of ordinances and funding that you could maybe set up in order to make something that's administrative more successful. So, you know, for example, looking through city ordinances to identify barriers. You know, that's very legislative and a very easy thing to, you know, fund and have started and look at. But when it comes down to sort of contracts and issuing contracts and recruiting businesses, that's more administrative. So this is an example.
So Jennifer, another thing that occurs to me that could be a legislative component is that if we wanted to focus in on some specific funding priorities, and that sort of, some things, some topics started to emerge, I think, and will continue to grow. In particular, as we're looking at, in my mind, one of the opportunities is neighborhood nodes, or whatever we call them, since we're not supposed to call them nodes.
Business districts.
But what currently are funded, what programs are currently available to the city, and I don't think we have many, but what additional funding would, we might want to consider to look at providing incentive in those areas or for other priorities that we develop as strategies as a council. And so that could be a really interesting and challenging conversation at looking at those funding components.
I guess, you know, looking at the staff report, my question really is, how do we go about getting the vision put together? And so I'm not entirely sure about, you know, what we do there as a legislative body. And how, like, what, I almost feel like I want to have a more in-depth conversation with the six of you on economic development and takeaways from our fact-finding night.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Please, go for it.
So, yes, I think that is absolutely necessary. One of the challenges, of course, we're having right now is the budget process. And so, and the other component of that is a follow-up that the staff is working on and going out into some communities and getting some additional information. So maybe one of the ways we could address this staff is that if we could start collecting thoughts or questions from board members right now, and if we started gathering that, sort of track those so that you don't have to remember every conversation you want to have when we get down to the opportunity, probably in July, where we really start talking about this as a body. Because we have to go through a process where we say, here are, here's all the information we gathered. Here's, the staff can direct us to maybe some areas that could gather together for priorities. But we have to have a conversation about what is a body we want to focus on. What are our one, two, three, four priorities? And that's what they're going to need from us. And we have to have a pretty healthy conversation, I think, to do that. But I don't have the sense we're quite done with our fact-finding. But I don't want to miss, I don't want us to all forget the information we gathered from last week. So is there a way to capture questions or comments or thoughts?
And I don't know if, Allison, if this will help answer your question, but we straw-pulled last week about going into communities for fact-finding nights. And I think that might be probably the next step that we look at is going into neighborhoods and diving into a little bit more finite details of what neighborhoods need and what they're looking at and what they, they expect to see that come out of our fact-finding night. I think that was, that would probably be our next step, is going into the communities and talking about it. And seeing what they, they consider, you know, the right type of economic development for the area.
Yeah. I think that's incredibly important, but I worry about how long that would take. And, you know, I feel like that is the job of the Economic Development Department as an ongoing kind of practice. So I don't disagree, but I kind of disagree.
No, I totally understand where you're coming from.
Actually, and I think I disagree. I think it's our responsibility to, to really seek input from the community. And I'm not sure that's going to happen specifically through an Economic Development Department. My expectation is, from what we're hearing, that they're going to hit the ground kind of running with some programs. And so we'll be seeing some of those. But to my knowledge, other than Natalie's work, which was really sort of Downtown focused, it was Downtown-centric, really, which is fine. But I don't feel confident that it's fully covered what we would consider a broad spectrum of economic development and priorities. In particular, for me, interest, Derek, is the neighborhood component and the small business component, which I think make up a huge factor of our new job creation and our stability for economic development. And they tend to not get a lot of focus. We tend to keep our conversations pretty well focused on the big company, the big corporate, the big site location. And I want to make sure we adequately cover the needs of those smaller business startups.
Mr. Chair, could I propose an idea that might get at both of those in terms of us going out into the community and soliciting feedback from those particular, that level of economics in the city? And that, maybe we create a survey. And as council members, instead of creating a committee like we did for golf, where we picked one or two people from each district to give us sort of responses to what we were looking at as a council, maybe we, we deploy it to, to certain business owners. Maybe, we may keep it small enough so that it's manageable for staff. But that we, I can think of 10 business owners in District 5 who would love to tell us what we can do better as a city to help their businesses. And maybe that could be a strategy that gets us really concise information that has in question format based on what we're already seeing and hearing.
And I think that that will work in certain districts, and in others, it won't work. That's why I think we need to be able to engage and have, you know, some sort of fact-finding night where not only are businesses invited, but also the community can come and see what we're willing to do.
And I don't mean that about the development necessarily, the future, but about our current ordinances and where, where we're at right now and what we could do. Not in terms of zoning and future growth, but how we are as a partner in their business growth.
So Derek, to your point, I completely agree with you. It doesn't feel like we're moving anywhere by doing that. But if I look at it as a bigger picture, by going into the communities, asking questions of business owners or whomever the stakeholders might be, I feel like we can develop some sort of policy around where each district lies and say, okay, well, we're looking at big business or medium-sized business or neighborhood business districts. And figuring out a policy where every type of business is welcome and figures that, you know, how we can help them out and to establish the business in those areas.
I, you know, I agree that, you know, this community engagement is critical to get a large vision of the city. And I think it's also important for me to acknowledge that this is only one component to our economic development strategy. But what I'm trying to express is that there is a real concern among the business community and a lot of residents as well, I think, at least those who are engaged, that we are duplicating things that had already been done with Enterprise SLC. Just talk to the Business Advisory Board, and they're not shy about that concern. And so I think, you know, we just need to be careful with what we message. And also, I'm looking at my reference point, which is the Downtown Plan. Downtown Plan, and they've been doing that for three years. And the last thing I want is a three-and-a-half, four-year plan on economic development. I mean, that would be great, but I don't want that to be what occupies our economic development priority this year necessarily. So my fear is not getting enough done on economic development when we all have such a unified drive to, you know.
As a council body, as well as the administration. I don't think it's ever been looked at that way as a, as a priority for both, both branches of government.
And let me add that I would bet if we went around right now, that we would all have a very different definition of what economic development is. And so we talk about it like we're all on agreement, in agreement on the same page. And I'm confident we are not.
As long as you agree with me.
Yeah, I know, I'm okay. I don't want to dismiss or undervalue the opportunity of somebody from a small business or a small business community sitting in front of us and feeling like we're deliberately listening to them and engaging. And I don't think that, I mean, my response to people who say we're duplicating services, like, there's no way we're duplicating what's already been done. Natalie gave us a really good, broad picture, very Downtown and West Side-centric, industrial and Downtown-centric. And you, I defy you to go through there and find good information about small businesses. And that's the part that's missing for me, is how do we, as a city, develop policy and funding that really encourages our small business development? And I don't see that happening if we, say, administration run with your new director and we're done. So, and I'm not talking about a three-year process. I'm talking about by the end of the year, like we said, as a priority for this year.
Could I ask a question, Stan? Someone's been around longer. In the, in your report on the policy questions was, do you want to look at the legislative intent that was done last intent that was done last September, asking for, in the next year, previous administration, of course, to have a, what was it, an economic development master plan? I mean, certain items, is that still a part of what we're talking about, or, because we're looking for, it sounds like we're looking for, I'm not disagreeing with anything that's been said. Yes, public outreach is great, having a vision, et cetera, et cetera, but if we need something to frame this around, is, do we need to go back and look at what was sort of been done so far, and say, is this a start? Because what it said to me was that here's places the council wants the administration, previous one, of course, to focus on in this economic development master plan, come back to us within the next year, addressing these items, and help us with whatever we're going to learn to address it. Because, that's my question, I guess, is that the intent of what we had in last year, or are we scrapping that?
You know, I think that, I think this is referenced as a strategic plan, right?
In the, in one of the previous discussions, the council did vote to change it from a master plan to a strategic plan. What's in your packet, or in your under-policy question number one, is the original text, so it doesn't reflect that change, and I think there are a couple other small items in there that may need to be changed, if you do wish to.
I think, to your point, Stan, about, you know, it would be, we'd be hard-pressed to find information from small businesses. I think that that touches on my first question, which is, you know, if we need to maybe take what we learned from last week's fact-finding night, where we talked about big business and huge job center, or big job creators, and then, you know, these neighborhood business nodes, I think that, you know, I would argue that a lot of us would be in agreement, to some degree, that we should choose small business as our kind of direction, and that's kind of what I was meaning when I said we should pick a winner, is I don't mean we should pick an industry necessarily, but we should focus primarily, in my argument, on small business, and then maybe we do, you know, a more in-depth conversation with small-business owners. So, it sounds to me like maybe that's the direction you might want to go. I don't know if we are really all in agreement on that, but I think that that is a solid direction, and that could help staff really refine the kind of work that they're doing over the next six to eight months.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I just make two clarifications quickly? One is that, as Councilmember Mendenhall mentioned, talking about surveying businesses, I do want to stress that through this open-city hall, get-out-the-comment effort that we've done, we've received, as of last week, there were somewhere around 70 responses to that, people writing in and telling us what they want, and of course, it's a variety of responses, some more detailed than others. But we are getting some feedback on that, and we also have the opportunity, as time goes on, to change the questions we ask. So, we began with the sort of generic questions that we started with for the presenters in the, in the fact-finding night, but we could change them to be more specific, to meet particular, particular items that the council really would like more feedback on, and I mention that just because the cost of a survey.
Sure, and we could share that link directly, as council members, with business owners that we want to encourage feedback from.
Absolutely. Our email list was somewhere around 8,000 businesses and business organizations, and we're happy to add more.
I wanted to make a comment. I like the idea of narrowing the focus towards the smaller end of business, but at this point, personally, I feel like it's a guess, because we, I haven't heard a very clear vision and direction, and desired outcomes for the position in economic development. I don't know what the administration is hoping, or is going to advise that new person who's going to be hired shortly, hopefully, to concentrate their efforts on. And until we know that, we can guess that it's going to be big business, but we don't really know. So, I would be okay with us starting that discussion, and then knowing that, and communicating to the administration, that we need some real clarity on what the expected outcomes and focus of concentration will be for that position. It cannot be everything, that's the reality of any one person, and even with a few people under them. So, when we, I would propose that we request that from the administration as soon as possible, and then we can tailor our momentum to fill whatever gap we identify as a body.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, just on filling the gap, so to speak, one of the clear roles for the council is legislative oversight, and so, I think, we have mentioned it, that the building services audit is ongoing and will happen in the, in the sort of interim period, because in our minds, that's sort of independent from, it's independent from, but will inform future work on economic development. So, we have this scope, and Allison, maybe you want to speak more to the process of refining that scope.
What's our timeline to that? And I know that you've been developing a scope, and one of my concerns is, clearly from the op-ed we saw, there's, there is a different perception around that process from a small-business perspective than there is from a large-business perspective, and so, how do we incorporate that in scope, or have we looked at that?
And so, Allison, before you jump in, for me, I understand why we would look at small businesses and focus on that, but, for example, the northwest quadrant is just, it really is ripe for the taking, and it's going to be larger businesses, and, you know, I'm going to speak specifically in District 1, we really don't have any neighborhood nodes, so I could totally see focusing on small business. But then I look at 2200 West, and there's potential for great mid-sized businesses, as well as the northwest quadrant for larger businesses. So, for me, if we're looking at it, I almost see it as a strategic plan for every different type of business in Salt Lake City.
I would, I agree with that, because I think if we, the danger of picking a winner on, and I'm not criticizing, I'm just using your words, but the danger in doing something like that, I think, at this point, or at this stage, is that we need, we need to focus on everything. I mean, we need a focus on big business, we need to focus on some of the new northwest quadrant, industrial-type stuff, we need to focus on, on small business. So, the issue isn't, you know, are we going to be able, is Salt Lake City, in the future, economic growth of Salt Lake City going to be tied solely to small business? Absolutely not. But it's also not going to be solely, we can't just solely rely on, you know, the larger business economic development either. And so, I think, to James's point, we absolutely do need to look at how to move forward with both large-business growth, small-business neighborhood node growth, what the vision and concept for the northwest quadrant will be, and I think it all has to be done at the same time, because we can't, there isn't one of those things that is more important than something else. The reality of the situation that we're in right now is that there are other municipalities, other counties, other areas of the state, where the legislative and administrative bodies are doing the exact same thing that we're doing. And there will be opportunities, so it really is a competition, and I think we need to view it as such. We need to get past the idea that as Salt Lake City, and the capital city, that people are going to want to relocate, or that businesses are going to want to relocate, to grow or to stay, simply because we're Salt Lake City. Unfortunately, that's not the case, and we're seeing that over the past couple of decades, where you have some municipalities that are, have figured out how to utilize some of the business attraction and everything else. And I think we need to get back into that mindset, but focusing solely on one type of business over another, we're setting ourselves up for complete failure.
So, Cindy was going to bring us full circle.
Well, we'll see. Sometimes it feels like you're not moving forward, when, I'll make an argument to say that I think you are moving forward, because you have, you've done your fact-finding, you've done these other things. Every single conversation that the council has is a bit of forward movement, whether you're talking specifically about economic development or not, because what you're, you're talking about how you want the city to function in, in relationship to businesses, and builders, and small-business people, and all of those things. And so, it's our job, and the administration's job, to pick up on all of that input. For example, at your last RDA meeting, you were talking about whether or not you are comfortable with sales tax subsidies. That was a piece of information, it was a good conversation, that helped us know where you're coming from. So, you have, I don't know whether you want to call it parallel tracks, or if you want to call it a river going forward, with all kinds of streams feeding into it, but you have a lot of your business input so far, there will be more and more. The foundation is the, is Natalie's report, there's no, I think everybody's building on that, there's no one that wants to duplicate, although I can see how people would perceive that. So, and right now, the mayor and her administration are formulating what they're going to be doing. So, throughout the budget, I think you're going to get a lot of additional opportunity for conversation, and when you have conversations like this one, it gives us a direction on what to be looking for in the budget, what to be looking for in your RDA, those sort of things. So, even though it doesn't feel like you're moving, you're moving, and you've given us, because you told us focus on economic development, and the administration is also focused on it, it's going, it's, I think it's going well. Doesn't feel like it, but, but, promise.
All right, Allison, tell us.
Well, I assume you mean tell, tell you about what's going on with the building services audit.
Exactly.
Okay, good.
That's what I said. My wife always says that, by the way.
So, essentially, the idea is, now that we have a draft scope, we will speak to, or we're actually going to be doing interviews with cross-section of different kinds of people interested in, or with experience with the city in development. So, we're talking about both real estate development and other kinds of businesses, big and small, trying to get a cross-section. This is not going to be a extensive, wide-cast net, because really, you know, we're sort of balancing time and, and staff, staff ability to work on a single thing during the budget process, with the idea of getting a good, a good list of people to speak to, or to hear from, rather. Then that will do a, from those interviews, we will do a redraft of the scope, and then send it out for RFPs from the three firms that the council has on retainer for these kind of projects. We'll get their responses, and I believe our date we're looking at is end of summer, correct? For, for responses from the, from the consultant side.
For starting the contract, end of summer for starting the contract?
Right.
Right, okay. And are we looking for recommendations from them? Is our scope broad enough to look for recommendations for at least some initial potential ordinance revisions, or is it going to be broader than that? I mean, I just imagine there might be some things that come up, that could come up quickly that suggest some ordinance revisions.
The scope does mention asking for identifying barriers, identifying key components to the city code that are barriers to economic development. I think if you wanted to do, one of the presenters at the fact-finding night discussed the process that the city undertook for the sustainability revisions of the city code, and that was a very, very significant funding chunk, and a consultant dedicated to that project, and that project alone, that could easily be a funding opportunity for the council to fund for this economic development. But I see that as a much more extensive study than this sort of initial, maybe you can call it a high-level look of the building services program.
Well, Derek doesn't want to take three or four years, and so, I remember that sustainability study took a long time.
It was about three years.
Yeah, it was about three years. So, I'm wondering if we could look more specifically at some phases for that, because there should, it feels to me like there, and sustainability, we've kind of waited till the end of it all, and although there were a couple of modifications we brought in.
I was going to say, actually, I remember the sustainability was phased, for that reason.
So, could we make sure that we do that in this context, as well, maybe even accelerate that a little bit? Because I think that it already takes a significant amount of time to do an ordinance change, just the process. So, making sure that we're going into this audit with the idea that some things may surface quickly, and we may want to look at those accelerated. But I do think, over time, we probably want to do a pretty deep dive on it as well.
Any other comments? Allison, is that pretty good, to be moving forward with?
I think it's lovely.
Great.
If you'd like to look at the policy questions.
Yeah, I'm confused still, I guess, about where we've ended up on this. I know I'm new, so please humor me.
Should I guess?
Go for it.
Then you can correct. I think that we're continuing to gather everything we can, in terms of feedback. I think that we're, we will be getting in touch with each council member to get your thoughts and impressions at this point, and be sure that we have those clearly, so that we don't lose them in the timeframe. We're moving ahead on the audit, and one thing I thought of after Councilmember Mendenhall mentioned the, all of the businesses, and Councilmember Kitchen mentioned the Business Advisory Board, is it seems like we should go back to the Business Advisory Board more than once on the scope, and I'm wondering if maybe council members might want to host some meetings of people that, who have contacted you, that you know of in the community, where we could have these, maybe a group conversation. Allison was going to go do some interviews, and will still do that, but I wonder if, in some cases, you could just think about whether you might want to invite a group in, where we could have staff get more from those groups, so that we don't miss anyone. And then, in terms of, I think, I think one of the questions the chair was asking is whether we know whether the administration wants to, is going to move forward on a, a plan. I don't know what modifying word to use with that plan, strategic, or master plan, or whatever. And I don't know if we know that officially yet, they might have told us, but I can't remember. So, that's a key piece of information that we need to have. And then, it will be a pretty short time, I think, before you start getting more information from the administration, and then you can form where you're going. That's all I know. I don't know if you want to go ahead with the community meetings, or not, so we need clarity on that.
I would prefer we move quickly on the community meetings, because I think that's a valuable opportunity, and I don't want to underestimate the value of saying to people, we want to listen to you, and incorporate that in our process. So, I hope we can move forward on that. The other thing, Cindy, I think would be important, based on some feedback from the Business Advisory Committee, because I think there is some misunderstanding about what we're doing versus what Natalie's work was. So, we ought to invite them as some sort of representation in our public process, so that they can see what, because I really see us as refining that foundation that we've already been provided.
And just so you know, I believe it was two weeks ago at their meeting, they were able to make space on the agenda, and so, I laid this out, and did try to clarify that the council's intent is to build on the Enterprise Salt Lake.
It'd be interesting to go to them and say, ask them how they want to
Yes, absolutely.
To observe, or be part of that process, or however we do that, because they are advisory to us as well.
James?
Charlie.
I think part of the, part of the confusion, I think, may be the, whenever we use the word "plan," it gives this, I think it gives an idea that we're going to be creating a master plan, or, especially when we're talking about an economic development master plan. I think economic development is one of those things that is really difficult to plan for. I think we can lay, I think creating more of a strategic vision, as opposed to a plan, is something that, if we try to come up with a very wordy document, it's going to be shelved like most other master plans are, and referred to rarely. I think we need to be much more succinct, and I think, you know, working more with, like, a bullet-point approach, as opposed to, in our traditional planning approach, is something that, if we have something that we're easily, that we can easily refer to, that we can easily articulate and communicate, that is where I think we're going to start seeing more success, as opposed to spending a lot of time, you know, crafting up a very bureaucratic document that the public doesn't buy into, that the business community doesn't buy into, and that just takes up a a lot of time, you know, crafting up a very bureaucratic document that the public doesn't buy into, that the business community doesn't buy into, and that just takes up a lot of time. So.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could suggest, perhaps, policy question number two might get to the, the points that Councilmember Luke is expressing?
Policy question number two.
Right. So it's whether the council would like to consider adopting a 2016 Economic Health of the City policy statement. And there's a draft that staff prepared based on the previous philosophy statement. Begins at the bottom of page three on my copy, but that's probably not the same as yours, I apologize.
No. So Allison, if you're okay with this, I am going to first straw poll with the council, if they are in favor of going into the communities to hold fact-finding nights.
I believe you straw-pulled that last week.
I think there's some question in regards to it.
Okay.
Just so we've got it. So council members, if you're comfortable with having fact-finding nights in districts?
Before we do that, though, shouldn't we have an idea of what we're fact-finding?
Well, so this is my whole point, is that, and I'm going to use District One as an example. District One economic development is going to be different than District Six. And that's why I think if we have a broad statement, it's not going to pertain to District One or to District Six. It's almost like we're looking at an entire downtown master plan. Whereas I think if we get district-specific, it's a lot easier to dive into that finite detail, where we can say, "Well, you know what? There aren't neighborhood nodes there," or, you know, "There are too many neighborhood nodes," or, you know, "The Northwest Quadrant," or, you know, the way we're looking at it, there's, there, there's never too many, right?
James?
Yes?
I didn't mean to cut you off, but I just wanted to echo Charlie. I think that there's a big risk in doing this before we have an idea of what we're going after, because, like last week with our fact-finding night, I walked away with so many ideas, but not a clear direction. And I think that we're going to get the same kind of feedback from our communities. And so I almost feel like, you know, just to talk about what Charlie mentioned, about how it's really important that we don't get too wordy in our plan, maybe we need to consider it more as an action plan, an economic development action plan, rather than just some broad master plan. And with something like that, maybe we can have that as a launching pad for what we go into the community with. I, I do think we need community feedback, but I'm worried about getting, all of this getting a little bit too muddled, and us getting lost.
And I don't really see it as getting lost. I really don't. I mean, especially if we're looking at district-specific. Do you know what I mean? I, I feel like if we're looking, it's almost like a vision statement per district, if you look at it that way. And altogether, you've got a whole.
Mr. Chair, can I reflect some of what I'm hearing from Andrew, which is that we produced our philosophy statements on economic development, which led to the request with the administration for the
Master Plan.
Master Plan, strategic plan, blah, blah, blah. If we're going into these, these smaller district or community-focused sessions, will we be using those as the, the basis for the conversation, or will we be asking for feedback from them on what we've already come up with? And I guess I want us to narrow it down, like Derek's saying, let's get, let's not just go in and say, "Tell us what, how you think we're doing, or what we can do better," but, and, and it's partially because of, which wasn't council-directed necessarily, but when we did the community meetings last year, the three, I believe there were three of them on police brutality, and we hosted those community events, asked people to come out. They were very, we've received a ton of input, and we have done nothing with that input. And that's not the city, that's not our council staff, but I'm saying that as a city, we've gone out into the community and solicited feedback on sensitive issues. And I want to make sure that we know exactly what we want to catch, and that we also have a bucket for the, those unpredictable things before we get there. I didn't mean to direct that at our council staff. I know that that wasn't, we didn't direct that. We participated.
Mr. Chair, would it be useful to review the draft policy statement, and then maybe base, use that as a basis for deciding whether it's useful or not? Maybe go one by one?
The example I use for our community outreach from a council perspective consistently is the work we did when we adopted the plans over in Sugar House. And the meeting we had there, and the council hosted open house, and there were a lot of things presented, a lot of opportunities. It was as much education, because we did about an hour and a half of education before we did the public hearing. And granted, it was, it was pretty specific input on a, a master plan. At the same time, we really gave that opportunity for people to engage. So even some ideas that came up in that moment were either incorporated or, or we figured out how they already fit into the plan. I see that as an important process of our broader picture. And, and frankly, one of my real concerns is if we don't provide adequate opportunity for neighborhoods in particular to be part of this process, we are setting up conflict between our business nodes, our business direction, and the community, neighborhoods. Because we're already seeing that when we talk about nodes, and encroachment, and density, and all of those issues that come up. And I, I don't think we've provided a sufficient opportunity for people at that level to even share their thoughts, except Open City Hall. I mean, we started doing that. And, and that's kind of the, for me, the next real opportunity is we should be going out there and maybe casting a very broad net, at least once, to see if we're getting anything, to see if we're on track, to see if we're getting anything that we haven't considered, to see if we anticipate some resistance. I think it's very possible that if we came out with a economic development plan without that consideration, I know some of my neighborhoods might go a little crazy about it, and wonder why we're only focusing on businesses and not giving any, not providing anything for neighborhoods. I mean, there's a whole host of reasons that neighborhoods should support economic development, but I don't think they understand that.
Truly. And Stan, I agree with that. But I don't think this is a question about whether or not we have, or we solicit public feedback. It's, it's a question of timing, and when the right time is to do it. When we went to Sugar House and had the successful community meeting, there was some, there was something specific that we were asking about, asking the community about. I, I worry that if we go in, and it's not that I, I will, any of us would be foolish to stand up and say that we don't value public input, and that we don't want to hear what constituents have to say. But there's a way that, that we can do it where it's more productive, rather than just soliciting opinion. You know, if we're, if we're going into a neighborhood, you know, I look at how some of the recent transportation, open houses have been done, and there is, there is something very, very specific that, that we approach the community with, which doesn't, it's not that we're directing public opinion, or that we're saying, you know, "We only want you to focus on this." But if we go in without any sort of, of purview about what we're talking about, the discussion's going to be all over the place. And while that's not always unproductive, if we're trying to move something forward this year, it, it may be. And so, I think if we first develop kind of the, a basis for what we're looking for, that we can put out to the community, and then have those meetings, then I think that's, you know, completely appropriate. Because you're right, you know, we, oftentimes, we, we don't solicit input from residents, or we solicit it after something's already completed, you know, in a, in a public hearing kind of a setting. That, and so I'm not advocating at all for that approach. I just think we need to have some sort of specific issue that we're bringing up.
I wonder if it would be, if it would be sufficient or helpful to, in a public process, ask the very same questions we asked in our fact-finding night, for people to respond to those, and just be really specific and say, "Here's an opportunity to come and share with council your views on these," I think there were six, four, four things. And, and I think that might be a way to focus it. At least we're giving them an opportunity to think about. And I appreciate it, that, you know, we are probably to the point where we don't want to just be wide open. But we asked some really specific questions of those presenters, and we got really good responses, because they thought about it. And maybe that's, there's an opportunity for us to approach it in that regard.
And I'm much more comfortable with that approach, because it is, I think it's, it's more focused, and it'll be more productive. One thing that I think we need to be careful of as well, there, while small business economic development is district, I can see how that is district-specific, I don't think that, you know, larger economic development is district-specific. And I think if we, if we go into districts and say, "Okay, well, what do you want to do?" I mean, some districts, you know, they're just going to be focused on what's happening there. And so I think if we, if there's some way that we can focus that input on small business and business nodes, and things that have those direct district fields, then that makes sense. Because what I don't want to do is get into a situation where it's district versus district, and you have districts trying to compete with each other, or, and I, I think that would be disastrous. And so I think, looking at, you know, the types of questions that we're looking for, you know, "What do you want to see in the nodes in your community, in your, you know, in those areas?" That makes sense. What do you want to see in terms of going after larger manufacturing-type business, I, I think is, is much less relevant at a district level.
Totally agree. And I can imagine that maybe we want, might want to, Allison, like, tailor some of those questions to be specific about. And I imagine that if we looked at what services are important to you as a resident in your neighborhood, or what don't, what do you need access to that you don't currently have access to, or, you know, or what are your, you, you did a really good job of crafting those questions for that, those presenters. And so I imagine if we figured out a way to do that, that could help us get that focus we're looking for. The other part of that is, we could throw that philosophy statement out there and just test it, see if it's still relevant, too. That could, we could just throw it out and say, you know, "Do you have any reaction or modification to this in that process as well?"
And when you say "philosophy statement," are you referring to the one that was approved several years ago, or there wasn't one?
Yeah, you shortened it last year, didn't you?
Well, we, it's here, in question two.
That's a, I would say, maybe condensed version
Right.
of the previously adopted one. So, philosophy statement was adopted a few years ago. It was reviewed before you guys last year, but never adopted last year. And then Allison has condensed it into a more sort of succinct version of the policy statement.
I like that.
Which is a perfect example of what I was talking about with plans versus
Right.
Yeah.
Visions.
This is, this is our role.
Yeah.
If we're, if we're going to go to a deeper level, and more than just fact-finding, trying to outline, "This is what we want to do," I don't know why we're hiring smart people to do that for the city. I think we need to have input, but I, I'm more interested in, in taking these sort of statements, saying, "Here's the scope, here's our timeframes we want report back on, and then here's the funding we're willing to do." We can get down to specifics all, all day long, but I think that's going to miss what our, our role is in a lot of this, when we're gathering the information to bring it back to some overall topics, and then let some power folks to go out and do it, so we don't get bogged down in this too often.
Bogged down this conversation like today?
We're, we're all passionate about it. I don't agree with that.
So would you like to straw-poll? Question number two?
What's question number two?
This is the, whether the council would like to adopt the 2016 Economic Health of the City policy statement. The draft is below that. I can just go through it point by point, if you'd like. It begins, "The council wishes to foster a robust, sustainable, and diverse economy in Salt Lake City through, A, maintaining Salt Lake City's position as Utah's preeminent economic center, and one of the most important in the Intermountain West; B, cultivating qualities that contribute to Salt Lake City's vibrancy and, and economic health, including, 1, a diverse population; 2, identifiable neighborhoods; 3, neighborhood business districts; 4, thriving arts and culture; 5, affordable housing; 6, transportation options, particularly transit and alternative modes; and 7, access to natural outdoor environments, I'm sorry, access to natural outdoor environments that is unmatched by other urban areas." And back to C, promoting economic and educational opportunities that target populations in need; D, increasing the skills of the city's workforce; E, encouraging business projects that meet the city's vision and are located to maximize the city's existing infrastructure, transit options, and housing; F, working collaboratively with other levels of government and with nongovernmental organizations to increase the effectiveness and efficiency of our efforts; G, tracking city progress in economic development, identifying successes in areas needing improvement; and H, fostering population growth by increasing density where appropriate.
Let's straw-poll that. Council members, are you comfortable with that? Or do you want to discuss it?
Mr. Chair, can we talk about it for a minute?
Let's do it.
That, that is just so much stuff. It's, and I know it was probably an attempt to really capture a lot of things, but who doesn't want all that stuff? Everybody wants that stuff. But because it's so comprehensive, I think it's completely impossible to implement. It's just, it's just so big. And so I don't know, it seems like a really nice idea that you'd put in a paper if you were writing it for your college professor. But I don't see the practicality of it. Maybe you have no vision, Aaron.
I think that I, that a philosophy statement is intentionally lofty and broad.
Yeah, but it's really specific, too. I mean, geez, under B, how many, seven sub-points under just B is a lot. So that seems pretty specific to me. I was thinking philosophy statement, like you said, is broader, and not so many specifics.
I, I think that, as I look through the seven points of B, I can, you, or I, or any of us as council members, could rattle off three or four ongoing programs and efforts that the city's doing to support all of these already. And it's just talking about cultivating what that, it's not that we're starting, we have to reinvent the wheel here with these philosophy statements. But, so Lisa, are you saying that you'd rather us have a really, really succinct philosophy statement?
Sorry, really, really what?
Well, this is the newly succinct philosophy statement that Allison pared down for us. So would you, are you saying you'd rather have a really, really succinct philosophy statement?
Really, really, and I didn't have the last word, succinct.
Succinct.
Succinct. I would, yeah, I probably would, would like, I don't know. I, I think this just seems overwhelming, in what all is, is contained in it. And maybe I'm the only one who thinks that, so that's okay.
I'll say I'm comfortable with it. And I was about to thumbs up, but if we didn't have a discussion.
Can you, since I just walked in, can you tell me what we're thumbs-upping or down?
Nope, sorry.
We're talking about the philosophy statements on page three, four policies. No, the philosophy policy statement.
Councilman, we actually thought about deliberately changing it from a philosophy statement to a policy statement, and it may get back a little to, to Councilmember Adams' observations. Because the idea is, philosophy is really, really broad, and perhaps not something, I mean, it's, let's say, policy, and calling it two, 2016 policy statement, gives the idea that this may not be written in stone. This is not necessarily a once-and-for-ever idea that, for example, future councils would be bound to, but rather, it is something that is related to this specific year, this specific council, and has some specific policy ideas attached to it, or perhaps implications, policy implications attached to it. That makes more sense to me. Oh, good.
Me, too. Thanks. Lisa, your point makes more sense, too, to me.
So council members, this is just such a broad topic, and I hate to throw more, more work on Allison in moving forward. That being said, I think that it would be highly beneficial for Allison, as well as each council member, to meet with you individually, and to discuss their vision of economic development, and how we can talk about that. Because right now, we're just throwing out stuff. And if we are able to dive down, you can probably be able to put something and mold something together that incorporates everybody's vision from the council.
Okay.
Geez. It's a heavy lift.
It is a heavy lift. I understand that. So.
So thanks.
Thank you.
In the meantime.
Well...
Thanks, Allison.
Thank you.
Any other questions for these fine women before we move on?
I, I.
Go ahead, please.
Go ahead, Derek.
No, please.
Part of the great honor of being a councilmember and working, is working with this staff. And we've seen different iterations of how our staff rarely says no to us. So, Mr. Chair, I'm concerned that if we get to have individual sessions with Allison to tell her all of our wishes and desires for what she could produce for us for economic development this year, and no one says no to us, that we create a difficulty in making success this year.
I think that Allison can come up with some great questions that will lead her in the right direction. I really feel comfortable with that.
I guess, I just want, I want to make it clear that I want people to tell me no, or here's how we could, here's what we can have the capacity for as staff. And this, these are some other themes, you know, to help guide us, to be aware of the themes that are coming out of these individual discussions, so that we aren't just throwing things at the wall without being able to actually accomplish.
So I have the impression that the individual meetings with Allison would be consolidated and brought back to you for a full discussion. So, so that, that would be.
Okay.
Helpful. But we will take the liberty of saying, ooh.
Thank you.
I just wanted to echo what Erin said, that, you know, I think Allison, based on those four questions that she came up with for the folks that were involved in our fact finding night, I think she's, will do a great job at, you know, picking out some questions that will help direct her in the right direction. But it is a lot of work and I am, I will just say that we chose this as a priority this year because it needs to be done. It's something that hasn't been addressed, economic development hasn't been addressed in a comprehensive way in our city in a long time. And it is a lot of heavy lifting. But, you know, we didn't choose it because it was easy, but it's because it was necessary. And so I think that these one-on-one meetings will be helpful for us to be productive later in the year. And so thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on. We are going to jump back to item number seven, which is building height in downtown secondary central business district zoning text amendment. Now, we have Russell Weeks and Nick Norris and Molly, they're back. And Carlton, you just can't get enough of us, can you, Carlton? Do you miss it? I mean, this is your third week in a row. It's like you're going through withdrawal. Why don't you come up and join us at the table as well? And Erin looks back as well.
We still have his chair.
His giant chair is over there. No, we got to make it special. All right, Russell, are you going to lead us off?
Well, Mr. Chair, maybe the easiest thing for staff to do and be brief about it is simply go to page two and read the purpose statement of the central business district and the purpose statement of the D1 zoning district, because that's where the issue lies. The purpose of the D1 central business district is to provide for commercial and economic development within Salt Lake City's most urban and intense areas. A broad range of uses, including very high-density housing, are intended to foster 24-hour activity environment consistent with the area's function as the business office, retail, entertainment, cultural, and tourist center of the region. Development is intended to be very intense. The standards are intended to achieve established objectives for urban design. This is the D4 purpose statement in part. The purpose of the D4 secondary central business district is to foster an environment consistent with the area's function as a housing, entertainment, cultural, convention, business, and retail section of the city that supports the central business district. Development is intended to support the regional venues of the district, such as the Salt Palace Convention Center, and to be less intense than in the central business district. So the issue is, in staff's mind, how are you going to handle achieving the goals for both districts when in fact the Salt Palace is across the street from one of them? So that's, that's my introduction.
So we're just going to throw it out to questions. I guess I'll start, why would we look at an unlimited height tailored with the design review?
So part of it is because of the proximity to the D1 district, which has the same height standard, basically. So there is no actual height limit in the D1 zone, there's just triggers that make you go through a design review process if you're above a certain height. And so we wanted to carry that over because, like Russell said, on the east side of West Temple, it's all D1. The west side.
D4.
Is D4. And so we want to have that, at least on this block, to have that same sort of height definition in ordinance.
And do you think that with that, would it promote economic development or changing it, would it, would it slow it down in each of the two districts?
Well, we have looked at a number of different height options, whether or not we're looking at the whole of the D4 or just a portion of and doing like a additional height overlay. And with some of the public feedback that came through the planning commission, the planning commission decided to go with the unlimited as opposed to capping it at, say, 375 feet, which is the trigger for design review in the D1 on corner properties.
I think the other thing, too, is that by limiting it to those blocks, we don't think that it has an impact on economic development in the D1 zone. Whereas if we were to apply it to the entirety of the D4 zone, it could have an impact on property values and land values in the D1 because we would have added all of that new land, which has some pretty sizable development parcels to it, to the market, and that could have had an impact. And that was one of the concerns raised by the property owners and development community downtown, was to, was to try to restrict it in a way that reduced that impact. But I think universally, the development community was very supportive of finding a way to make the potential convention hotel as feasible as possible.
Erin.
Can you go back to when these areas were created and maybe why, I suppose the need wasn't there at the time, but that the convention center wasn't included in the D1 then? And this feels like natural growth to me, and that we, we just saw a moment ago from Molly about how we are going to continue our centralization of the downtown area and not have a couple of main downtown areas, but as, and this is as proximal as we get. So talk to me about why it wasn't included in the first place.
So the reason it wasn't included, so, so the primary reason was in 1995, when we rezoned and created the downtown zones, the Salt Palace was, as a convention center, was already underway, I believe. And the thought was that if we rezoned that area to all D1, that we run the risk because of how much at the time, how much land was available for development, particularly on the south end of downtown, that we would have competing convention centers, which we didn't think was good. And so in the D1 zone, we do not allow convention centers. And as a result, we created, or one of the reasons why we created the D4 zone was to address the large kind of destination types of uses that exist in this general area, so the Salt Palace where the arena is, at the time, how Triad Center functioned, and things like that. And so that, that's really why it was created. It was seen as, like the name suggests, a secondary business district, a place where, where the central business district should grow and over time grow in an appropriate way, and very consistent with the D1. I don't know why the height limits were put on there, other than to preserve some of the intermittent view corridors of the central business district.
Looks like you want to say something. No?
I was totally content. I'm happy to speak or let, or follow Erin's, if you want us to.
Yeah, I would love to hear you guys talk about this if you want to.
I do have a quick question then, before you do. So the Metals Plaza parking lot, that's not included in these, in this new boundary, is that part of the D1 currently?
Portions of it are zoned D1, portions of it are zoned urban institution. So the frontage along South Temple is zoned D1 already. The northern half of that, or more than half, is urban institution.
So why wasn't that, why didn't we just include that when we were drawing the boundaries, that area, instead of having a block that's divided by two different zones?
I don't know the answer to that.
I, I could answer that. I would think it, I'd say it's fair to say that the neighbor, the residential neighborhoods to the north of North Temple had a lot of concerns about massing.
Okay.
And encroachment of high, so it was a way to basically draw the line.
Okay. So I can see that at the time, but now that we're expanding it to include the Triad Center, wouldn't it make sense just to clean up the boundaries of this new area?
Well, let me, let me clarify. So we're not changing the boundaries of the zoning districts at all?
No, but you're, but you're eliminating the height.
We're, we're, at least on the block that's east, where the Salt Palace Convention Center is, east of 200 West, so between 200 West and West Temple, we're allowing additional building height. That's what this text change applies. So we did not look at changing any zoning of properties or anything like that as part of this.
Okay. All right, Erin, I think that we were looking to you. We wanted you to jump in and.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to add, I think Nick very eloquently talked about the extension of the central business district. As we've been looking at the needs related to a convention center hotel and its proximity and connection to the convention center, there are two possible real viable sites that fall within this corridor that we think should be considered as locations for the development of the hotel. I think, as you all know, we're not big on sky bridges in our community. If we are able to build a hotel on site, it creates a real positive connectivity to the Salt Palace that we're interested in exploring further. One of the issues, of course, that we needed to address was the zoning issue and the height restriction in that area.
Mr. Chair, I would also add, and from my past experience, as you know, that stretch of South Temple is a fairly, in part inflicted upon because of the convention center and, and its sort of swing moments of population. It has not been as active as a stretch of beautiful street as, as it could or potentially be. And so while the hotel wouldn't necessarily have to go in that location, we certainly felt like it would also augment the urban fabric of that connection and connecting the core of the downtown to the properties to the west as well. And certainly the same is true on the second south side. So, you know, it certainly gave the county a couple of viable options, which we felt like complemented community needs as well.
Any other questions? Derek.
Do we have an update from the county on where we're at with the convention center hotel? We haven't heard much in maybe eight weeks now? Maybe not that long, but it feels like that long?
There's not a lot that I can say, except that we're in term sheet negotiations with the top developer who was selected by our RFP selection committee. So we're actively engaged in some negotiations with DDRM at this time.
Do you have a timeline on those negotiations?
I wish I had a definitive timeline. There's a few complications related to site and other issues that need to be worked through. And so we're just actively working on those as quickly as we can.
I know that just from the documents, these are all conceptual, of course, but do we know, I mean, if we, if we allow unlimited height, do we know approximately what we're looking at getting in terms of convention hotel and how tall are they, what are discussions at right now?
Nick, do you remember?
I don't remember the exact, well, there's no exact range because they obviously haven't designed the building yet. But typically in a hotel, particularly when you have a relatively small footprint, so convention hotels generally have fairly large footprints, but given the parameters, at least on the Salt Palace site, it would be smaller than most, which means it has to go taller. So for example, I think the convention hotel in Denver, which would have a fairly similar footprint to this, I want to say is in the 400-foot range. So that, that would push it to be.
So we might actually get a building that can eliminate the notion that we don't allow anything taller than the church office building in Salt Lake City.
Well, that, that may be, but of course, it's going to be an issue of topography, right? So the church office building will still look taller.
Yeah.
Just one quick question. Are we still hoping to get something for OR in 2018, 2019? I think it was something I read in the paper a while back. Is that still, I mean, are we still worried about losing out on conventions in the city? Is that a concern?
Yes, I think outdoor retailer is one factor in the consideration. I always like to clarify for everyone that building the hotel is not for OR, it could help us maintain the show in our community. It's something that is desperately in need for that show in particular. But for us to remain viable as a convention destination that remains in the market that we're consistently in now, this is a critical need for us from an infrastructure standpoint to remain competitive. I think last year, we lost about almost 30 conventions because of the lack of a convention center hotel. So I think this is, it's bigger than OR, and OR is one consideration, absolutely. They would love for us to have a center built by 2019. That remains to be seen. Whether or not they'd hold out with us for a few years is really not something I could answer, but something that they're paying very close attention to. But for the long-term viability of us as a destination to remain competitive, this is something we need in our portfolio, regardless of whether or not outdoor retailer chooses to stay in our community.
I'll stop linking OR to the convention center hotel.
It's okay.
But I was really disheartened to learn that the Adobe Summit Convention left Salt Lake for Las Vegas. And you said we lost 30 last year?
I believe it was 30 last year. Yes, that's correct.
That's significant, so.
It is.
I think you'll find that this body is very supportive of anything that we can do to make this move along.
Thank you.
Well, we would say you've been great to work with us over the last couple of years. So we really appreciate that.
I'd say if there's one thing, it's just, just get it done.
Doing everything we can.
It would make Erin's body so much easier.
It would make it so much easier. And if I could go back to your question about the height, I did go back into the study, it's been a while, but I believe the, the hotel on the north side was planned at about 25 stories. I can't tell you what that equates to in height, but that would be approximate stories for the hotel to hit the, the room block tower that we would need to, to maximize. And that's an 850-room hotel, so.
And is that sufficient to not only maintain what we have, but try to bring other conventions in?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I would just say, one thing that often gets looked past is that while you have a large room block in one hotel, they're going to go to other hotels, but they just need a core place that they can always promise, at least up to a certain point in time.
Can I ask one question?
Of course.
Good vibes with the new developer?
I choose to remain silent. I just, I want to be careful in the negotiations. Thank you.
Just have to get all our ducks in a row, right?
We are working as hard as we can to, to make this a reality.
Could I ask one more question then? And this might be too specific, but one of the concerns is basically sight lines, on the north side at least, for the condo owners, but also for Temple Square, I think particularly is identified in the, in the draft. This doesn't touch that, but we're opening the door to some issues there. How is that going to be addressed going forward if this?
So the, the standard that is proposed in the ordinance, I don't know if we have So the standard that is proposed in the ordinance, I don't know if we have this in here, but, go back, is that we have added some references to our adopted urban design which identifies some view corridors and things like that. And so the way we've written the language is that something would have to comply with or demonstrate how they meet those urban design standards. Now, with the views of the temple, of the temple, the primary consideration or something to think about is that the building on the corner, the tall condo building, already substantially blocks a good portion of that view from the south and west. And so you, we did a study of where that's visible from, and you pretty much have to go to almost the 400 south overpass to, at a surface street level, that's not even technically a surface street, to catch glimpses of the temple from there. So this, the two locations, the north location may have a, some impact on that, but the planning commission would be asked to determine whether or not it is still substantially complying with that policy or not. Most of the views are actually along South Temple or from the interstate, as people are passing by on the interstate, particularly coming into the city on I-80, and that, this would not impact those.
Any impact on a Robinelle Hall?
As far as views go, I think that's going to depend on the actual details of the site and everything else.
The massing studies that we've entertained show that the glass walls that exist for a Robinelle Hall that look to the east would not be blocked from the hotel. The massing studies we've looked at and some of the work we did with Omni still allowed for the plaza, the existing plaza that we've created out front to remain, even with the footprint of the hotel.
Not like you can do anything about this, but since you just mentioned the plaza in front of a Robinelle, really what were they thinking that there's no direct way into that building? You have to go across the lawn in high hills. If you're in a hurry and you're going to miss the opening number, just wanting to register that it's lovely it doesn't work.
Thank you, Lisa. I made the same comments to the architect myself, so we'll assume that people will create that path and then they'll put it in.
Put him in high hills and tell him to be trying to make the opening number.
Yes, I agree. And we may be addressing that.
All right, well, we appreciate you coming down and going through this with us. And everything is in line with the timeline that's on the agenda here for moving forward.
And that timeline would be a public hearing on May 17th, Mr. Chair?
Correct. No, no, it's on the, we set the public hearing date on May 3rd, and then we hold the hearing for a public comment on Tuesday, May 24th.
Thank you.
And then we have tentative action on June 7th.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And welcome back, Carlton. You can come anytime. We're on to item number nine, the Central Ninth Lofts Partial Alley Vacation. And we're doing really well. We're 40 minutes ahead of schedule. We have Nick Norris, Nick Tarbit, and John Anderson. All right, Nick, tell us about the Central Ninth Lofts.
Well, if it's all right with the chair, I'll simply defer to John Anderson. He's the planner. I don't want to duplicate what he's going to say. However, we're going to talk very slowly because the developer is running here right now and should be here in about the next five minutes. So he is very interested in speaking to the council, so we'll be watching for him to show up.
So give us a really detailed explanation, John, about this.
Well, I just want to, maybe I could just read my whole staff report from the very beginning, so that might help. So I hope he's not running either in the rain. I hope he's not driving. But, so we're here to discuss a request to vacate a portion of an existing alley, and obviously more specifically, we're talking about the air rights over a specific alley. It's important to note at the very beginning that this, there's no recommendation or any movement to close this alley to public use. This is important because it provides access to the required parking for some of those single-family or low-density residential uses that are existing along Jefferson Street and along 200 West. And it's also just not a goal of the city in general to close any existing functioning alleys. If you look at the map, it just shows a general aerial map of what we're looking at. The alley is outlined in red. It's a north-to-south running alley, which begins at Golz Avenue, which is that south street there. Like I said, it is in use and will continue to be if the proposed alley is vacated. You can see on this, to the west, as the tracks line is runs through, on the south is Golz, on the east is 200 West. This map is a little bit outdated. There is a church still shown there, but that church has since been demolished on the east side, and the parking lot was on the west side of the parcel. This is kind of a little bit unusual situation because there is a single parcel divided by an alley, which does not occur very often, and I think was one reason why, the assumption was, I think, you thought you could build across the entire piece of property because there was one tax identification number assigned to it, so. The applicant is seeking to build multifamily structure on the property. The first proposal was just to build a solid structure across the entire portion here and included covering all the alleyway with actual habitable space. We worked with the applicant and found that we did not find that that was probably an appropriate design. What did it was just, and this isn't showing it, this is kind of the new proposal, I probably should have showed the original one, but what it did was build one solid structure and just build a blank wall along Golz Avenue. And further, it made that alley no longer feel like it was a public space at all. It looks like an entrance into a parking lot, and we didn't want to encourage those changes. And also, there just was a concern of having occupiable little space over a public right of way and whether there was any safety concerns related to that. So we had worked with the applicants. The applicant is now requesting to build a pedestrian bridge to connect two buildings. It's shown here on this site plan. You can see two independent structures with that gray, excuse me, that light gray section there showing a bridge between. This was been to connect people with amenities. There's different amenities for residents on each side of the building and wanting them to be able to travel from one to the other. And also, the applicant has mentioned that he's trying to create a unique design feature as well. If we go to the next one, I think this kind of shows it a little better, is that you can really see that the bridge is inset from the street and that it does, especially the top picture there, does create the look and the feel of two separate buildings as opposed to a long, flat street facade.
And it's a four-story connection, right?
Yes. So, and also, if we look at this, it does actually feel like an alleyway. It does not necessarily only feel like an entranceway into a parking lot. So the, see, the proposed development, they are, of course, they're going to improve the alley in their own development, but it does make its existence even more prominent. To begin with, this was actually a parking lot for many, many, many years, and I don't even know if a lot of people realized that it was an alley. There are no standards for vacating just the air rights of an alley. There are standards for vacating alleys, and this project does not meet those standards. It does not meet those standards because the alley will stay open. Those standards are things such as they're not in use, they're unsafe, it's going to be used for a community type of feature rather than the alley. And so this was kind of an interesting proposal, but we wanted to make it clear that although it did not meet those standards, we felt that was a positive element, that it didn't meet those standards, because we want to encourage the use of that alley and to not only have it remain, but also to have it improved. We held an open house, there were four in attendance, everybody spoke in support of the project.
How many were in attendance?
There was four neighbors came by during the open house. We also, the public, the planning commission held a public hearing. We did not have anybody from the public that I saw in attendance, and certainly nobody spoke. The recommendation from the planning commission was positive and unanimous. There were conditions. The conditions are fairly simple. The first one is just that if the method of disposition just follows the Salt Lake City Code and those requirements. Second, that the closure is subject to payment of the city of the fair market value of the air rights, which that will be determined by Real Estate Services, who are smarter men and women than I am, so I don't know exactly how they'll do that, but they are confident they can. And then again, just to reiterate, the alley needs to remain open to vehicles and pedestrians. Be happy to answer any questions here. I saw the applicant snuck in here behind us, too, and I know that he would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Are you okay, council members, if we hear from him? He's got five minutes.
Thanks. Really, the sole...
Will you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm Alec Harwin. I'm with the group that's developing the project. You know, our sole purpose was to, to allow residents who will be living on the west part of the wing and residents who are living on the east part of the wing to be able to cross safely with, you know, not having to go outside and cross the street. And originally, when we designed it, we were going to build actual apartments over the alley to allow that connection. And we met with, you know, the planning department, all the way up to my city council representative, who sort of said that's probably not the best strategy, so we scratched that, and we thought this was a good alternative. The site, what's weird about the site is it's one legal parcel with this public alley that bisects it, right through the middle of it. So, you know, we really want to build one building on it, but because of this public alley, we'd be, you know, we're sort of forced to build two if we can't connect it. And, you know, we thought that was sort of the best strategy for, you know, it'll, it'll look good, the neighbors will be able to use it, and that the residents won't have to go outside and risk getting run over by a truck at 5:00 in the morning while they're going to the gym. So I guess that's really all I have to say. Thank, thanks, thank you.
Questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Just one quick one. So it sounds to me like there has not been any negative response from the area and the neighbors. Is that correct, John?
Not that we received. In fact, most people really just want to see this empty vacant lot go away. It's kind of been troublesome with gathering garbage and vehicles for sale and snow cone shacks, which are often left there alone and by themselves. So, no, I mean, in fact, if anything, I heard more neighbors saying that they, they wanted to be a part of this development rather than anything else.
Great. Okay, thanks.
This is more of a comment than a question, but, you know, the design looks great, and I'm really pleased to see, is that a clear glass walkway on those four levels?
You know, we haven't nailed down exactly what, what the bridge would be, but we're thinking storefront glass, you know, to, you know, it'll be something that'll be architecturally interesting.
Just to confirm, this is market rate, right?
Yes, yes.
How many units?
93.
93. I think it's, you know, going to be a great project for the neighborhood. This is Aaron's district, but it's really close to the border of District Four, and a neighborhood that's just blossoming. And so for me, it's exciting to see a project like this go, or be proposed for that empty parcel, which, you're right, is definitely a problem and an eyesore for a lot of folks. I'm also really happy to see that you will continue to leave the alleyway as part of the use for the project. If I'm not mistaken, the cars will enter the parking garage through the alleyway, right?
Correct. The alley actually is going to serve as kind of our driveway, where you'll, you'll ingress and egress into the, if you make a left, you're going into the, underneath the west building. If you make a right, you're going underneath the east building into enclosed, secured parking garages.
And, you know, I love alleyways, and we have a lot of them here in the city, and, you know, driving by this property today, you wouldn't realize that there's actually, there's an easement there. So I think this will, you know, definitely positively contribute to the neighborhood, so thank you.
Who's going to maintain the alley?
Well, it would be city-owned alleyway, and I'm sure you guys, I don't have a long history of maintaining alleys well. The developer will need to improve it in that area, and, but it would be city-owned.
So we would still have to plow it, we'd still have to maintain it?
Well, we don't plow alleys, and so if they wanted to plow it, then the applicant would need to take care of that.
But it'd be covered by a building, so.
Well, partially, not the entire thing. It'd be, what, 12 feet wide that's covered?
20 long, right? 14 in width?
14 feet wide?
And I know that they requested a little bit extra, so that we know when they're in construction, because it is a very specific location. It has to be within these boundaries, so I believe the bridge will actually be smaller than that, but just to make sure they can fit it in their invisible box in the air of air rights purchasing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Alec approached me with this a long time ago, it feels like now, and I was uncomfortable with it, and I think it's because this is something completely new, at least in our city, where we would sell the air rights above a roadway, so to speak, that's in an alleyway, and partially, my discomfort is that we've intended to have a robust discussion about alleyways and what we're going to do for a really long time now, and we haven't. And Derek and I are hoping to do some more discussion with the council to move that along. But the notion that they are necessarily blighted and that we should get rid of all of them, that comes before us from time to time, and I don't like that notion. So I think that the changes that the applicants made to their design proposal, making this, I think it makes it more attractive to have it be glass and not stucco with windows of people's apartments above it, is an improvement, and I'm going to be in support of it. I am really anxious to hear what my community council there says, and it's on their upcoming agenda, right? Yes?
Not that I'm worried. I sent the notice to the community council, and they did not want to have it on an agenda at that time.
So you mean, it says that there was a request to have it placed on the upcoming agenda. Oh, they've declined it, though.
I didn't, and so we actually, I honestly have no idea, but, so we actually went out of our way to hold an open house to make sure there was that opportunity for public comment before the planning commission, and, you know, sent out our notices for 300 feet and everybody certainly that uses the alley, and just to make sure that the neighbors knew what was going on.
Of the four neighboring property owners who attended or who submitted comment, do any of them actually live there, or are they property owners that have a business there?
All of them were neighbors that live within, if you're walking. I mean, one was literally across Jefferson Street. I think two of them are. One was to the south, and someone was to the north.
That's great to hear.
In fact, there was no business owners, they were all property owners.
Right.
So the folks to the north did participate, because, I mean, you're looking at, the four homes there didn't get sold between the new development on Second and Mead, and then this one, and they're going to be essentially canyoned in, correct?
Yeah. I mean, they definitely will have a project to the south, and there is a project moving forward on the north. I believe they're requesting it alone from the council there on that property, 1015 South 200 West. And so they were notified of this project, but also when the zoning changed on the property a few years ago, I worked on that project, and we notified those neighbors, and did not get a lot of response from them, this project, or through that process, or this process.
Do any of them own their homes, do we know?
I don't know. I do know a lot of them are renters in that neighborhood. We do send notices to the residents as well as the property owner, if the property owner lives somewhere else, so even as a renter, you should be getting noticed.
So this is an interesting precedence, though, and I think if we go ahead with this, we should expect to see more of this. Because the benefit that this developer gets by not having to build two exercise gyms or two office facilities because they have two separate buildings results, on the one hand, in probably a better product in terms of what they're able to invest because they aren't duplicating services in those buildings, and then, on the other hand, we've got a skybridge. And just a few agenda items ago, we talked about how we don't like skybridges in this city, didn't we?
We just, I heard that, yeah. It was the county that said that.
I can think of one very specifically that was controversial, but, you have to, at this point, there has not been a lot of precedent, and I dug back and tried to think of every type of, anything we had that's similar, and City Creek is really the only thing that came to mind. Trolley does have one, but it's old enough that the records were tough to find, and...
And people would maybe debate this, but it's, at least at City Creek, a public facility, and this is, this is not that, so.
Cindy?
Just a quick thing, I think, I can't remember, is there one at Gallivan? Or not? They didn't end up doing that one? They were talking about it.
There's one at Gateway. I think it's a private, Gateway has one.
From the parking structure?
The two issues that were brought up in the years when it has not been looked favorably upon, one was view corridors, that was, and sometimes that's not an issue on a development like this, but on a major street, view corridor, and then the other was traffic at the pedestrian level, which you probably know, but.
Neither of which really apply here, but it's interesting.
Can I add just one thing? And what's a little bit different, though, about this is we're connecting... And, you know, what's a little bit different, though, about this is we're connecting from our property to our property, isn't, isn't everything else is connecting from a property to a different property? Is that correct? Or another?
Not at the gateway.
Or City Creek.
Or City Creek.
Okay, then I'm mistaken.
I think the difference is that, like, City Creek is a retail attraction with hundreds of people, and trying to get those to bleed out into the neighborhood, I think, was the biggest question, instead of trapping people or funneling people through, and I don't know that it would be comparative in this situation.
What's the height that you've got from the street to the first floor of the walkway?
17.
Is that what it says?
I believe it's 17 feet. The fire marshal has looked at that and approved that height.
James?
Charlie?
I know that, I mean, if we're talking about skybridges over a public right-of-way or just skybridges connecting two buildings together, and now that the Brigham Apartments have one, possibly two bridges connecting the South Temple Building to the First Avenue Building, now there's not a public easement under it, so that is different. But if we're talking about if we've ever seen, you know, two separate units that are owned and operated by the same housing group, there is that precedent that was done however long ago. They were built 20 years or something like that.
I think that we should contemplate creating some criteria for satisfaction after this applicant, but based on this, that we achieve something by giving up the airspace above a public right-of-way. Who's to say that you couldn't, you know, this couldn't happen in my neighborhood where I have an alleyway behind my house, and if I bought the lot behind my house and I want to build, and I could build, you know, if the zoning were such that I could build up, that I could build over my alleyway and create a massive property? I mean, it's, after this, it's not so far-fetched. So what if we think about after this applicant goes through the process, creating some criteria that we can evaluate future applications through?
I think you're right, that it couldn't, that it isn't far-fetched to consider that, but I believe it would still be two separate parcels in that instance, whereas this is one parcel that--
Unless there are other parcels like this.
I'm sure there are.
I'm sure this isn't the only one.
Yeah, the Brigham Apartment parcel, I believe, was two separate parcels that they connected together.
Interesting, but not over a public right-of-way?
Not over a public right-of-way.
But I do agree with you. I think we should come up with some criteria, and I think in this instance, we, the public does get some benefit in that a blighted alleyway is going to be partially renovated to a degree.
It's going to be a driveway for 98 apartments, but still--
It's better than, you know, a big, huge lot, you know, filled for a snowshack, you know? And a few couches, I think.
Yeah, I think that's kind of a tenuous argument, though.
That it's an improvement, you mean?
No, no, that it's a public benefit. I mean, this is primarily a private benefit, so I'm not opposed to the concept, but my question is, what are the downsides? I mean, you've talked, you've talked about this for a long time, I'm guessing, and thought through a lot of things, and you know the city in a lot of different ways than I do, but potential downsides that have come up from setting a precedent like this or anything?
I think, I think in this situation, the downsides are pretty minimal, honestly. I think, I think it's primarily, the biggest thing is probably you end up with, well, not probably, but you end up with the potential of having multiple driveway accesses on an area where movement, mobility is already challenged because of the nature of it, you have freeway off-ramps and rail lines and things like that, and so even pedestrian movements are really impacted by that because, primarily due to that viaduct for the off-ramp. And so anytime you're trying to create a pedestrian-friendly environment, one of the things that you want to avoid is a high number of curb cuts and traffic conflict points at sidewalks. So one of, I think probably the biggest benefit of this is that you end up with one spot that's already existing. Granted, there will be more use of it versus having maybe multiple, if this were two different buildings, multiple driveway entrances, because there would be no requirement for them necessarily to use the alley or to improve it or anything like that, so that's the primary benefit. And I don't see too many negatives. I think it is a far different thing than when you're trying to cross a street or build a proposal to build a skybridge over a street, which has many more impacts, primarily those that have been mentioned, the pedestrian movement, the spill over, the view corridors, things like that.
I think, and we did, we took this very seriously. I mean, this was a very interesting situation. We haven't, I mean, nobody had a lot of experience with this, and so this bounced around to a lot of city departments, actually, before we kind of settled as to where we were moving forward. But I think urban design was really what most of the, especially with that original design, what those negative impacts were. And with, because we have such long blocks, we can end up with a lot of buildings that are very long and flat and blank wall, and with this public right-of-way, I thought it's important to make sure that we don't allow that to occur, that this does have this look and the feel of having two separate buildings, which I think this property deserves and makes for a better project for us, and I know it ends up the developer loses a few units, but I think at the end of the day, this is a far better project than when it came in on day one.
Aaron?
What guarantee do we have? I see in attachment E, the analysis of standards, on that first page of it, where it refers to the, I'm just looking at it, the bridge over the alley will be constructed mostly of glass. What guarantee do we have that that's going to happen besides your word?
I don't know that we have anything right now, and that may be something that we need to include in ordinance to make sure that if there are specific design regulations or attributes that you want in there, I, I mean, we could talk with legal, but I'm assuming that's something that could be, and we'd want to get that, obviously, in a motion from the council.
I would be in support of that. Yes, I request that. That's formal request.
Okay, wait. If I may, the way we've handled it in the past is our development agreement, where basically the developer says, yes, I would agree to including that provision in there.
And that can just be included in it?
And we'd include it in the motion, and then they would have to fill that out with the attorney's office and--
Great, and that's the fastest way for the developer, right, to get through the process rather than ordinance change?
Right, and at this point, at least once it's been approved, even though it may take some time to get development agreement signed and recorded, and they at least have that assurance from the council that they want to move forward in that direction, so I think that, at least that insurance, that helps, you know, get ready for building permits and funding and that kind of thing.
The class and the aesthetics are important to us, Aaron, so, you know, I think we'll probably overbuild what you're suggesting, but go for it, we'll agree to it.
We like things in writing still, Alec.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm in agreement to doing that.
Great.
And it was actually important that he said that, because you can only have a development agreement with the developer's consent.
If they agree to it, yes.
Yeah, it's, yeah, great. It's important for them to initiate.
May I ask one more quick question? No?
Yeah, of course.
Sure. Go for it. To the, to the question about the standards or establishing criteria, we could handle that one of two ways, or I guess both ways. One is the standard legislative action, where the council may say, planning staff or administrative staff, please go review standards. Also, as you mentioned earlier, the alley vacation policy discussion is always hanging out there. That could be something we could put on the list of alley vacation discussion items, so that when that gets back to the council, we can discuss that more than that.
When our chair schedules it after the budget sometime?
After sometime.
So would you, would you like us to, is it, is it okay if we do that, then?
Yes.
Okay.
I am comfortable with that. The one thing I'm not uncomfortable with--
You're not uncomfortable.
--that I'm not comfortable with is the community council.
That they didn't respond?
Yeah, I'm really disappointed that they didn't want to have this on the agenda.
I'm surprised about that, and I'm going to text him in just a second, but--
We're talking about Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, I met with him, and he, I mean, I haven't met with the other members, but he was very in support of what we're doing there.
Typically, he writes a letter, and we saw that with Majestic Meets last week, that was in Ball Park, and they'll, he, as the chair, will write a letter of support. If you want to circle back with him and see if you can get any form of--
Sure.
It's not reflecting on you. I'm just, I'm just kind of disappointed that they didn't look at this project.
They're a community council that met quarterly until recent, fairly recently, and now they meet bimonthly.
Monthly? Oh, really?
Yeah, and so maybe it's, I'm not sure. I can't speak.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Nick?
Would you like the next steps outlined?
Sure.
Public hearing will be set for May 24th, and then potential action the following council meeting if--
So we're not going to set the public hearing date, May 3rd, for the 24th?
No.
Okay.
Or yes. We will set it for May 24th, potentially tonight. It's on the agenda for tonight, excuse me.
Great. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That was pretty good, council members. That is a great conversation piece for us to be brought up later and talk about. I don't know, we'll see. So we are done with the agenda, but the dinner is delivered, and is it in the mayor's break room? Dinner is in the mayor's break room, so we will adjourn until 7:00 across the way for the formal meeting that Lisa Adams will chair. All right, thank you.